That'll do it. All right, I think, I know you've all been ready for five minutes, but I am not ready. So, welcome to the January 10th Medfield Board of Selectmen's meeting. This meeting will be held in a hybrid format. The Board of Selectmen will attend in person and members of the public may attend in person. And we have a lot of them here tonight, so that's great. In addition, members of the public who wish to participate via Zoom may do so by joining one of the following options: Go to the Medfield Town website, go to Agendas, and I have to make sure that now that we've revised it, I do this right? Go to the Agendas and Meetings, go to Board of Selectmen, drop that down, and the very one option you have for your agenda, if you download that agenda, the Zoom link is there. The other point here is for people here in the room, because Medfield TV is streaming this session live, if you have things that you'd like to say, the feedback we've gotten from the audience is that the audience that's online prefers for you to use the podium, so if you're going to be talking for a while, or if you're one of the most important people in your group to say something, you probably want to be up there. Otherwise, if you have a brief comment and would like to speak from the chair, we have the Bill Masara Memorial Microphone that is right there. Not memorial microphone.
Honorary.
Honorary microphone, excuse me, Bill. Honorary microphone. And when you speak in there, your voice won't be amplified because it's not for the room, it's only for picking up the audio feed going out to Medfield TV. So, it won't seem like it makes any difference, but it does. Okay. First, I want to take a moment of appreciation for our troops serving across the globe, so we just take a moment. Thank you. And our very first appointment this evening is the MBTA Communities Action Plan Update from Sarah Reposa, so take it away, Sarah.
Good evening, Sarah Reposa, Town Planner. I'm here for the third time this year to talk about MBTA communities. Actually, I was actually only here once, and then the second time was just an update in August. So, the first time was February 15th. That's when I gave you an initial briefing on the MBTA's community legislation. Now, it's an amendment to Mass General Act Chapter 40A, Section 3. And there is a requirement for communities like Medfield to create a district of by-right multifamily development. The district does not need to be necessarily contiguous, but it needs to add up to 50 acres. When you last heard about this in August, we were submitting an application to MHPMS Housing Partnership for technical assistance to sort of get a baseline on where we are with the, with compliance with that legislation, given that our Medfield State Hospital zoning district does allow for multifamily development by right with no cap on the number of units associated in the zoning. So, we worked with some consultants with that technical assistance to do two things. One, it was kind of like, I think they call it like a beta testing of the compliance model that DHCD has developed for all of the communities to kind of test the inputs and see how it works. So, our initial report indicated that the State Hospital District generally complied, but for two, two issues. One, it's currently public land, but then again, we have an LDA for almost 50 acres, and I don't know exactly where it's at right now. It could be with some of the areas up at the north end. It might be close, but then we have the LDA, which would make it privately owned land. The second issue was that the LDA caps the units at 334 units, not the 750 units, that the legislation is, a few weeks ago, the local team here had a conversation with DHCD to get a little bit more feedback on the State Hospital concept in, you know, meeting the spirit and intent of the law. Evidently, it doesn't meet the exact language of the law. So, where we're at now is that in order to stay in what they're terming interim compliance with the legislation, we need to submit an action plan to DHCD. And the action plan is actually pretty generic. Goes through some overview of housing and then some preliminary zoning strategies that we might consider in an effort to become compliant with the MBTA Communities' legislation. It's a timeframe of about two years now. In 2023 and 2024, we can be in interim compliance and, under the caveat that we're exploring ways to become compliant. The interim compliance expires December 31st, 2024, and then in 2025, if we are not compliant, then we do not become eligible for certain state grant programs. What's most important right now is that we know we have the Trinity Project, that they will be pursuing Mass Works grants and other state-funded programs. Because we are in interim compliance, we are eligible for those grant programs over the next couple of years, which is the next couple of funding rounds that Trinity would be looking for. So, I guess the, short of it is, over the next week or so, I'm going to be working on this, submitting this document. It's actually at one of the online portals, so I didn't have a draft necessarily for you to take a look at. I just had, I don't know if you actually, I saw your packet, I'm not sure if you saw the PDF that I had originally submitted, but it was just a lot of notes, you know, the direction, you know, that I'd be going to in answering the questions, such as, you know, what kind of housing plans do you have? Well, we have about six housing plans. What types of zoning do you think might be eligible? State hospital? What kind of areas, what other areas might you be looking at? So, in that regard, we would be looking at things like the downtown, the mixed-use overlay district that the Planning Board has started working on this past year, just to kind of test out scenarios. And I want to be really clear that when I had the discussion with the, our next round of technical assistance, I didn't necessarily put a cap on the thinking at this point, because it's really important, as you know, to have some corner cases, and we're talking about this type of density. You know, it's already shocking, so, you know, let's just, you know, take a look at what might be eligible and then kind of assess it from there.
So, Sarah, they're not giving us any credit for some of the recent projects, like Medfield Meadows and some of the other developments that?
No.
It's just a matter of timing. Like, if that had come in two years later, could that have helped towards our cause or no?
No, Medfield Meadows actually isn't, doesn't meet the density of 15 units per acre. It's actually 12.33. Yeah, so the, so for example, so 67 and 71 North Street, they meet it at 22 and 24 units per acre, and that's because it's eight units at, like a third of an acre. So, that, that makes the ratio.
Sarah, can you, can you confirm for Eileen that this is not, they're not asking us to construct this housing, so it's not the fact that we've actually built the affordable housing and gotten very close to our 10%? It's that they are looking just for the zoning by right, not the actual construction of the units.
And does the zoning, does that have to then get voted on by the citizens of Medfield? That's the kicker, right? Okay.
Creating the zoning district with the density that they're requiring, minimum size and density that the state is requiring.
And if the town looks at that and says, "This is crazy," then, then the town then needs to realize that we walk from certain funding, which part of it is key for the State Hospital funding, that the State Hospital doesn't come together without that money.
And, yeah, and maybe in 2025, we don't need to worry about it.
And it has little or nothing to do with affordability, it's strictly the creation of multifamily.
Yeah. So, you know, it's an evolving process too, and us, you know, had a roundtable with some other planners, and, you know, there were some guideline changes in October. Maybe through this process, they'll see that there should be other guideline changes, and you never know.
What's your take on the new administration, since this was all signed off under Baker?
It's a good point. I'm not here for opinions.
I didn't know if there was rumblings with, like, what you might have been hearing, that it was a Baker plan, but now it could get worse or better.
The governor hasn't announced who the Housing Secretary will be, so we're all waiting to hear that.
They're actually separating housing from energy in, under this administration, which I think under Deval Patrick, it was put together, merged, so, yeah. So, you know, it's definitely evolving, and, you know, this state elected Governor Healy, so we'll see how the policies evolve.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any questions, Pete?
Oh, yeah. So, the hospital doesn't comply because it's not 15 units per acre zoning, is that?
It, either it doesn't comply because it is not the 50 acres, or that the LDA caps the units at 334.
I'm surprised that it's not 50 acres.
Like I said, it, we could be close. I knew, when we went to town meeting, we, we calculated at 45 acres, but, you know, like I said, there's been some changes with that.
And we only land around there, so we could make it 50 acres. And then the question would be, is, is the, then the only reason it wouldn't comply was because it's not the 15 units per acre?
Like I said, I don't have the precise reason why it doesn't comply. I have, you're artificially capping it, and if you let this out to the free market, somebody else would be able to do 750 units there. And we know, we know, the premise be, going into that conversation on my end, was we know it's possible to put 750 units there. Fullty's, you know, suggested 702, so just add another one of those buildings, and there you go. We know it's possible to put it there, but was it the right move for this community? No, everybody, you know?
If they want it, so. So, I'm just trying to think of a way of enabling the zoning to say that it's, that it's 15 units per acre, 50 acres, but reality, you have to use the buildings under the land disposition agreement, so I'm guessing that they'll come back and say, "Well, that's not really complying then, because you're, you've artificially capped it at the 334."
Yeah.
Sarah, I didn't get all the way through this version, but the last time you talked to us, just to the 50-acre issue, last time at least, the preliminary guidance was, it had to be at least 25 contiguous acres.
Contiguous, yes.
And the other 25 could be piecemealed, so.
Parcels, yeah.
If we had 45 acres up at the State Hospital, we wouldn't have to add. If we found five other acres that would qualify anywhere else in town, we wouldn't have to add anything, and we could do that for up to 25 acres. If that's still, is that still?
Oh, yeah, you can have parcels elsewhere, indeed.
I mean, we have about 40 acres across the street, south of the hospital, but only 12 of it, I think, is buildable, so that, you know?
And it's publicly owned, so that's, but that's the rub with the, you know, the campus portion, at least, you know? So, we'll continue to explore and report back.
Is anybody talking to the politicians, the legislators, about this?
Yes.
I mean, there's got to be a lot of very unhappy towns like Medfield, so.
But understand, understand that this was initiated with legislation, which Sarah alluded to, they added a new Section 3A to 40A, and then they designated or delegated to DHCD to come up with these, the implementation. So, they were very much involved with putting this in place.
Yeah.
So, don't expect any relief, you're saying?
There was, there's, there's a long history of how this came about.
Okay, thank you.
So, for those listening here elsewhere, let me tell you what I think I took from this. I, I think the short answer is, we have to judge, you have to keep doing what you're doing. We have to judge very, very carefully what is and isn't allowable, and at the point that we're satisfied, we understand this whole situation, then we will have some decisions to make about what actions we're going to take in response. We are about to have accomplished or achieved our 40B goal. We have something with eight, eight, how many more units to get the 10%? Is it eight? Eight?
It's a little bit fluid right now, because the 2020 census numbers aren't final, so we're still using 2010, so we have projections that, yes, not too many units short.
So, less, at least less than one full year's worth that we had to get in order to stay in safe harbor to get to this point. So, for all intents and purposes, we are just about to cross the 40B goal of having 10%, which with something like 40, 400 housing units, that would say something like 440 affordable housing units, is what we had to do to comply with 40B. This, if you read it, as I read it, now that you've done 40B, this is not affordable anymore. This is multifamily, and in fact, we don't want you to have high percentages of affordable units in here. Nothing higher than 10%. So, we're, it's a practical matter, this is editorial. Towns are being whipsawed by a state that can't decide which direction it wants to take housing. So, for six years since I've been on the Board of Selectmen, we've been pushed in one direction, and we've scrambled to get where we've gotten. And now, this arbitrary, capricious, and counterproductive requirement coming down from the state is telling us, now they want us to run in the other direction. The weird part for me is that we have a 334 affordable unit rental complex planned to go up at the State Hospital. That would bring us from 10% affordable units to something like 17 and 1/2% affordable units. Real units, 334 real, actual units that people will get to live in. This, as it was presented to us in the presentation by DHCD, was, "No, no, just make it 50 acres by right. We know that there'll be buildings that are already there. We're not saying you have to build anything. It's not as bad as 40B. You just have to zone it for 15 units per acre by right. You don't have to actually build anything." So, we're in the very strange position of being told that an actual 334-unit complex that has multi, that's clearly multifamily, and it's multi-numbers of people in a family, that can't count, or maybe it will. I don't want to preclude final judgments here. That doesn't count for anything, because we have to find 50 acres that we actually literally zone at 15 units per acre somewhere in this town. And I'm guessing that, as a practical matter, if we were to take our best faith effort at it, we would say, "Okay, where's 25 acres that's contiguous that we can plug something down? And then, how can we piece together 25 other acres to comply?" And then, who knows what the next brilliant idea might be of where we run next? So, I'm feeling a little bit like Pavlov's dog here right now. Here's the bone, 10% 40B, once you get there, you'll be good, and, oop, another bone for you over here, run to the other side of the road. I'm not happy, not even remotely happy. We worked for over a decade to put this State Hospital project together. This State Hospital project absolutely needs Mass Works funding. And the idea that after all of this, this is coming in, I am furious, absolutely furious with this. However, I think before we get as irate as I sound right now, we need to take as good a hard a look as we possibly can at what our options are, what we, if we had to do it, or if we had to do as much of it as we could, what would that, what would it look like? Because we're going to have to figure out exactly how big a fight is this going to be, does this have to be? Oddly enough, at this particular case, I think we have leverage, but the leverage we have is leverage I wouldn't want us to have to use, because I think it's the State Hospital project that could be in jeopardy. So, for anybody who wondered what this is all about, why it matters, in my view, that's why it matters.
Well, the other choice for the town will be to forego the state, the state funding of different things in the future.
Yeah.
And so, we'll, you know, we'll figure that out, and we'll weigh the pros and the cons. I think it's, it would be very hard to get this zoning passed at town meeting. The other thing that this does is that, I mean, you know, the state is looking to increase the number of housing units in the, in the area, and once they do that...
Let's start by eliminating 334 bird-in-the-hand units to get to a zero.
Well, I think those will happen regardless, because of the fact that they'll get the mass development money before this precludes it, but...
Why, you always want an optimist on your Board of Selectmen.
But what's going to happen is that, I mean, that, if we build all of these units, 750 in Medfield and all the different towns, what it's going to do is it's going to depress the housing prices for the rest of us that already have houses, because there'll be a much greater supply. Apparently, that's what they want, so.
Bill?
Hi, just, just a couple of comments.
If you could identify yourself.
Yeah, Bill Masara, 36 Evergreen Way. So, just a couple of comments. I've only read it twice, and I haven't gone through it with my sticky notes and everything else, but the first thing that struck me was how they nicely, pretty much plugged every loop, every loophole that was in the original, you know, draft of what they were. For example, agricultural land, yeah, you know, we understand why you might want to keep it exempt, but it's not, there was a way to get around that, and you can, on agricultural soils, you can, there, you made a comment about, we could just pick an area somewhere, like downtown or whatever, and, and zone it to meet the 3A requirement, but they have a clause in here that says, "You can't pick an area that's not likely to ever be developed." I mean, so they, so they shut, shut that door. So, I mean, I think you're going to have your work cut out for you. I do have a question. What is the MBA bus stop that we have? Is it protected? Is it elevated? Is it whatever? I mean, I'm reading all of the requirements here, because they put a big emphasis on the bus stops.
Mark?
We don't have a bus stop.
In order to exercise jurisdiction to do this, they bootstrapped upon the fact that there is already, already was in the statutes, a designation of MBTA communities. We're in that group because there were amendments to that statute at the point where they were anticipating the expansion of public transportation, which frankly, never happened. So, we're one of the communities that has really no direct MBTA service, and that's why we actually have three years to do what we need to do, and they've somewhat loosened the requirements in terms of implementation for those kinds of communities, like us, like Millers, like, like Medways, you go out that way.
I think we're defined as an adjacent community, because we're next door.
No, you are, but, but, but the clauses that are in here, they make a big emphasis on the, on the, the shape, size, protection of the bus stop area, and then they lay out some requirements for what you need to do to make sure you have one that can, what I'm not sure of is that they're, whether they're forcing you to actually build a bus stop that you don't have.
No, no.
So, how do you?
We don't have service.
So, how do you comply, or how do you even fit the adjacent community if you don't have a bus stop, and if you, they can't force you to build one? I mean, that's just a question. I mean, I, like I said, I...
Because, because as I said, they defined it in terms of the communities that are listed in the statutes as being MBTA communities. A lot of those communities never had MBTA service. It was future expansion, it goes way out to central Mass, and some of the really rural communities out there are taking a dramatic hit if, if this is actually implemented as proposed, so.
Please forgive me if I, if I don't wonder why these communities aren't challenging it on that basis, because they based it on something that didn't happen, and something that's not correct. Again, I'm not, I'm not here trying to argue out of this or anything else. I'm just saying that they've really cooked the books against the towns, and, and some of it, where they hold out a hope in one paragraph, and then they manage to dash it in the next, you know, for example, you look at the two, two categories by which they determine whether, what your minimum requirement is, and, and how many units that turns into. After they give you two choices, they say, "It's got to be the greater of the number, of the two numbers." But again, I'm just saying, there, it seems to me that the communities ought to be able to go fight this. The other thing I thought was interesting is you can't say infrastructure is, insufficient infrastructure is a problem, but they don't talk about water. They talk about sewage, and they say you can always, you know, septic tanks or, or, you know, cesspools, what have you. They don't talk about water, they don't talk about infrastructure. I raised the question before, I don't understand why, why, I don't understand why everybody in the Charles River Valley, or the Napaunset River Valley who are affected by this, aren't sitting there saying, "We don't have the water resources to handle this."
They, they treat 40B projects the identical way. They, you know, if you don't have the infrastructure to support the 40B that's coming to your town, they say, "Tough, build it."
Yeah, well, I will point out, though, that back when the D.C.A.M. was talking about the 440 units, one of the biggest issues was whether Medfield had the water supply to handle the 440 units. Now, you come down, somebody ought to be looking here at, what are, what, we might have enough water to handle 334 units at the hospital, do we have enough water to handle the rest of this? Do the other towns have it? Can the aquifer in the Charles River handle it? I mean, these are all things that should be explored. I mean, I'm not, I mean, I'm no genius here, I mean, but there seems to be some pretty obvious things that, that should be challenged. Thank you, thank you for the time.
I would suggest we appoint Mr. Masara to chair the committee to deal with MBTA communities.
As long, as long as you pay for my divorce, everything would be, would be fine.
See, I think Cindy just texted me.
Yeah.
I think we need a meaner guy. I think we need a meaner guy to lead this committee, anyway, Bill. Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, you've got some work cut out in front of you.
I'll keep you posted.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Could they all just boycott and say, "Screw it"? All of them, just repeal, okay, nobody takes a vote.
I think we have to think, you know, that, at one level, the state has, has understandably said, "We need a lot of housing." Just as before, the state said, "We need housing that's more affordable." And so, if you look at what the state's trying to accomplish, and then say, in the context, at least to our town, and I suspect several others, in what way does this implementation advance the accomplishment of that goal? Where one of my biggest fears is that this thing, I appreciate and understand your optimism, Pete, it's just that if the state is not prepared to support a project like this one that we have, I'm not sure that we can count on a project like this getting through. So, it doesn't make sense to me that the very first action that the new administration would take would be an action that would, in effect, eliminate 334 housing units in the name of developing housing for the state. It just doesn't add up, so. We don't, we don't know what we need to know, we don't know what the size of the, we got to figure out what the real problems are, what the magnitude is, and see how to play the hand we got dealt, I guess. Okay. So, I think it's Medfield Outreach Quarterly Update next. Yep, I'm sure Kathy has better news than...
Pressure's on.
Well, good evening, everybody. I'm excited to be here. My name is Kathy McDonald, and I'm the Director of Medfield Outreach, and I brought my, my entire team, actually, here this evening. So, you can go to the next slide. I want to introduce, for those of you at home, you'll, you'll see them here live and also in, in the photos. Tonight, I have myself, Mia Chantirulo, who is our clinician on staff, and we have co-substance prevention coordinators, Mary Haas and Kyla Groner, and who didn't make it to our slide is our fabulous Boston College graduate intern, social work intern, Stephanie Noch, and she's here tonight also. So, I just want to remind people in the room, and also people at home, what Medfield Outreach, what services we provide, and how we might be useful to you. So, there are three sort of main categories of services that we provide at Medfield Outreach, one of them being clinical services, assessment, formulation, referrals out to appropriate resources, and a limited number of in-house counseling services that we offer. Our next big, sort of, I don't know, hub of what we do, is our community assistance programming. We used to call this needs-based programming. It's the same thing. It's eligibility determination and referrals out to local, state, and federal resources to find appropriate programming or resources that meet stated need. And the last big thing we do is prevention work, and that's where we're going to focus our attention tonight. And I just want to clarify for folks, we do prevention work in-house as part of Medfield Outreach, and we do that in a variety of ways. We do that through prevent, for, through teamwork with our public health nurse, our school nurses, our wellness departments within the schools, and we also do it in a community-based way. And we also do it in a community-based way through two coalitions. And one is the Medfield Cares About Prevention, which is our MCAP coalition, which you're gonna hear about tonight. And the other is our Coalition for Suicide Prevention, MCSP, which we're not gonna focus on tonight, but also does fantastic work. And it's important to say that those are in partnership, those community-based collabora, community-based coalitions are in partnership with the Medfield Foundation. So, tonight, I'm gonna let the spotlight be on the prevention work specifically through Outreach and MCAP. And this is kind of a part A and part B. There's so much information to share that I had these folks cut it into two parts or we would take over your entire evening. So, the purpose of tonight is to sort of set the stage of the data, what we know so far about community data with youth substance use and some parent perspectives. They're gonna spell it out to you. We're hoping to bring you more current data. And then the part B of this presentation is gonna be about what are we doing about it? What have we done? What are we doing? And what's on the horizon of our work? So, I'd like to turn it over at first to Kyler. So, thank you.
All right, everyone, as Kathy mentioned, my name's Kyler. Recently came on in November as co-prevention coordinator with Mary. And I'm a graduate student in public health and public affairs and really excited to be here. So, yeah. You can go to the next slide. All right, so this is just an overview of what we're gonna talk about this evening. As Kathy mentioned, the goal of tonight's presentation is just to give everyone an idea of what we know so far about substance use among youth in Medfield. So, we're gonna start off just kind of framing the conversation around prevention. So, we're gonna talk about, you know, what prevention is, why it's important. Next, I'm gonna go over some quantitative data findings. Then I'm gonna turn it over to Mary, who's gonna go over some qualitative data findings. And we're gonna end with some key takeaways. So, first, we just wanted to kind of situate the conversation around prevention and get everyone kind of primed to think about what prevention is and what our office focuses on. So, here I've got two quotes from two different organizations just defining prevention. And really, the key takeaway is, is that prevention is intended to address the root causes of health challenges. And as you can see in the second quote, it's intended to help people develop the knowledge, the attitudes, and the skills that they need to improve their health outcomes. And you can go to the next slide. So, here's just a model, a public health model that we use to conceptualize public health outcomes and just to inform some of our prevention work. And basically, all it says is that people are situated in a social ecology where there's factors at all of these different levels that you see on the screen that influence people's health outcomes. So, in terms of our work, we can think that there's risk factors or factors that increase someone's likelihood of developing a substance use disorder at each of these levels. But there's also protective factors that decrease someone's likelihood of doing so. And so, in prevention, we're really just focused on decreasing risk factors and increasing protective factors. So, next slide. So, we also wanted just to talk about why substance misuse prevention is important. So, here I have two statistics that I think are really compelling. The first one is that 90% of Americans who meet the clinical criteria for addiction started using substances before the age of 18. The other one is that one in four Americans who began using substances before 18 went on to, go on to develop addictions compared to one in 25 who started using at age 21 or older. So, when we think about prevention, we're really just thinking about delaying the onset of first use. So, next slide. All right.
Kyler, can I ask you a quick question on that, that last one?
Yeah, sure.
You may not have the answer, but what's the cause and what's the effect? So, in other words, is it one in four begin using, abusing if they've tried before one over 18 because they started? Or is it that one out of four people are so predisposed to addiction that they even begin before 18?
Right, so I'll answer briefly and then at the end, we'll leave some more time for questions so we can get a little bit more in depth. But, no, 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 but great question. I think the answer is really, you know, probably a combination of both. We know that there's so many different social determinants of addiction. These range from genetic factors to all sorts of environmental factors, trauma being a huge one, even things like economic status. I mean, so, you know, the picture's really complex in terms of, you know, what causes addiction? What's the true cause? But we know that one of the most effective ways to reduce addiction and to reduce substance use disorders is to prevent the onset of first use. So, the kind of causal framework is complicated. We could probably do like a whole presentation on that. But, yeah.
I just, just to add to that, this is Mary.
Mary, you need the mic. So, I'll just chime in while you're waiting for your mic because I've always, I've always understood that the, the, the use by the young people changes their brain and restructures their brain. And that's part of the reason that we don't want them to start using at a young age.
Absolutely, and that's a great point that I, I didn't address in this slide. But young people's brains are continually developing. There's kind of debate over when your brain's fully developed, but estimates or findings range from 25 to even some say in your 30s or 40s. And so, especially a critical period is adolescence. And so, we know, you know, there's demonstrable evidence that, you know, introducing substances to the mix has all tor, all types of, you know, long-term health outcomes when it comes to mental health and brain development and cognitive function, so, yeah.
And thanks, Pete, because that's actually what I was gonna draw everyone's attention to is the fact that, oh, this is Mary Haas, the other prevention coordinator for folks who can't see me. That, yeah, there's research about how starting early might actually turn on a genetic, a marker that's, that's predisposed. It can also change your brain in a time when brains are doing things like pruning for behaviors and, and looking at dopamine reward systems. And that can actually impact what feels rewarding and what feels relaxing. So, I think that there, that's why he put both of those on there because there's twofold. One is that 90% who meet the need started early, so that's just one fact, right? And then the other one is that if you start early, right, you have a 25% risk of developing an addiction. And so, part of it too, Kyler talks about, when we, we've gone into a classroom before, it says that you are, if you have a parent, I'll let you say this. I'm just passing right back to Kyler and then you can keep going. The parent with the genetic, yeah, because I think that might also speak to what, Gus, you were asking about. What is kind of the baseline if you have a genetic?
Right, so sometimes we'll hear statistics like 50% of addiction is genetic. And that statement's a little bit misleading. What it really means is that, you know, the explanatory, genetic factors explain about 50% of addiction. So, if we were to kind of collect everyone in the world who had a parent with an addiction and we were to predict that everyone, you know, who had a parent with an addiction would also have an addiction themselves, we'd be correct about 50% of the time. So, we know there's all sorts of other components. And Mary brought up a great point about, and not to spend too much time on this slide, but Mary brought up a great point about, you know, reward pathways. And literally all of our behaviors from, you know, your decision to get out of bed in the morning to, you know, what to eat for lunch or, you know, all the way down, it's, it's regulated by a lot of complex reward pathways in the brain. We know that drugs and different substances interact with those reward pathways and totally reshape how they're structured. And so, that's a big, you know, factor when it comes to early onset of substance use and then becoming dependent on the substance later down the road, so, yeah. All right, so next, we'll go into some data findings, some quantitative data findings on substance use among youth in Medfield. So, first, we just wanted to talk about our community needs assessment. So, this was a survey that we did in April of 2022. We got just under 800 respondents. Here on the left-hand side, you can see, you know, some demographic characteristics of the respondents. The majority were residents. We had a few town employees. And the majority were also over 35-year-old, years old and identified as white women. And this is really on par with, you know, who tends to answer surveys more broadly in research. And over here on the right-hand side, you can see a graph that shows survey, the respondents and how they responded to being a parent or guardian of children. So, the majority, about 80%, were parents or guardians of children. And you can kind of see, you know, the grades that those children were in. It is important to note that some respondents had more than one child, so that's why these numbers don't add up to 100%. So, next slide, please. So, here's some results from that same community needs assessment where we assessed perceptions of substance use and misuse. So, over here on the left-hand side, we see that 44% of respondents indicated that they did not know how to access substance misuse services. And 24% of respondents said that they did not know how to recognize the signs of substance misuse. So, this shows a considerable need in the community for education around substance use disorders and services for individuals. And over here on the right-hand side, we can see a graph that shows how people responded to basically the level of concern they had on substance misuse in both their community and in their family. And I'll call everyone's attention to the far-right bar. We can see that about 70% of people said that substance use was not a concern in their family, but only 9% of people said that it was not a concern in the community. So, there's kind of a significant mismatch there. And there's all types of different hypotheses that we could draw on that, but we just report exactly what the data tells us. So, that is an interesting finding. So, next, we'll turn to some statistics on substance use among youth in Medfield. For this, we rely on the Metro West Adolescent Health Survey. And this survey is a census of middle and high school students in the region. In 2021, there were almost 40,000 students in the region who participated in the survey. Participation rates are really high, so in the region, about 90% of students participate. In Medfield High School, I think the participation rate is upwards of 95%. And it just questions about leading causes of morbidity and mortality among youth. And some of those topics are listed on the slide. So, this compares substance misuse in Medfield to the broader district as well as the state and the nation. And this also shows current use, which refers to use within the past 30 days. So, Medfield is, for anyone who's having trouble seeing, we're the dark purple on the far left-hand side. And the first set of bar graphs are cigarettes. Then I believe it is electronic vape products and then alcohol and marijuana. So, we see that pretty much in everything except for cigarettes, so vaping, alcohol use, and cannabis use, there are elevated levels of use in Medfield. And it's also important to recognize that this data is actually what justified the town receiving the 2018 Drug-Free Communities Grant. So, there was, you know, a demonstrated need for prevention work. And there's a, a reason why Mary and I are here. So, yeah, next slide. So, this looks specifically on different patterns of drinking among Medfield High School students. And this is from 2018 data. We have the 2021 data, but we don't have permission to release it yet. I believe the school board is having a meeting on February 9th where they'll be going over that data. So, if you're interested, you should attend that meeting. So, and this just shows, you know, different assessments of drinking. So, lifetime drinking, current binge drinking, current drinking, binge drinking, and then students reporting that they've been drunk in the past 30 days. And as with, you know, the other data, we see elevated rates of all of these measures in Medfield High School when compared to the broader region. Next slide. So, this also looks at current substance use in Medfield, but this disaggregates the data by grade. And we see a pretty clear trend that as students get older in Medfield, substance use increases. This isn't particularly surprising and this is really on par with trends in a lot of other places in the country, but this is still an important trend to keep in mind. Next slide. So, this shows trends in current substance use in the Medfield region from 2006 to 2018. We see the top line is alcohol. There's been a pretty steady decline. The line just below that is marijuana use, which has remained approximately steady. The line at the, at the bottom are cigarettes, which have declined dramatically. But just above that, you'll see vaping, which the survey started assessing in 2014. And we see that that has gone up considerably. And we can compare this to the trends in Medfield. And so, one of the key takeaways are that the trends of current substance use in Medfield don't mirror that of the broader Metro West region. So, the broader region has seen declines in alcohol use, but in Medfield, at least from 2006 to 2018, the, this level of use has remained approximately the same. We also see a significant uptick in vaping since it was assessed. And the cigarette use does mirror the broader region. We've seen a decline in that. So, this is 2018 use. This goes all the way to 2018. And we have some data on 2021 for the region. So, are there any ideas of what happened 2021? Any guesses about up or down? All right, so if you click on the slide, it should show us. So, use went down in the region overall. There are a lot of different stories that we can tell with this data. One of the most compelling ones might be that during the lockdown, students were supervised more by their families. Maybe they had less access to substances. Again, we can just say what the data tells us, but to me, that seems like a pretty compelling story. And in terms of whether or not these trends are mirrored in Medfield, I think that's something that to wait for the school board meeting to find. So, next, I'll turn it over to Mary and she'll talk about some of our qualitative data findings.
All right, thank you, Kyler. So, just quickly, before we move forward, I want to say thank you to the MCAP members that are here. We have folks here in support. And then I think there's some people online, but I can't see them, so hello to you as well. All right, so into our qualitative data. The next slide, please. So, right here, I'm just gonna pause for a second and tell you about what we did. So, the data previous to this slide came through our Metro West Adolescent Health Survey and then also our community needs assessment through Medfield Outreach. The data coming up actually came out of key informant interviews and focus groups that Medfield Outreach ran in partnership with MCAP and also the Coalition of, Community Anti-Drug Coalitions of America, which is CADCA up there. They do a lot of data evaluation and research and work really closely with the federal government. So, they are the ones that trained us on these techniques, helped us develop the questions, actually tagged and analyzed the responses and really kind of did that data analysis for us. So, I'll just quickly, we ended up with 14 interviewees from Medfield High School. We originally had tried to do focus groups, getting kids together to talk about substance use with their peers was a little hard, so we didn't get anyone. So, then we switched gears to do one-on-one interviewing and that really worked out. With the focus groups, we ended up having three focus groups of adults. We were looking for parents in Medfield. And we asked specifically about youth substance use. So, that one didn't have direct question and answer quotes because it was more discussion-based. You'll see those in the responses. All right, so a little bit more detail about the how and the what. So, for our parent-focused groups, again, we had three focus groups. There were 21 parents, all self-identified as women. And then this was the range of the, actually, children of the folks that were at the, the focus group. So, again, these numbers add up to more than 21 because many folks had more than one child. So, then we'll get into the actual data. So, we're gonna go a little bit back and forth between focus groups and key informant interviews to just kind of keep them comparable. So, here, what we did is we asked the youth about which substance, which substances are youth using in Medfield that concern you the most. So, these here are, there were 13 respondents that ended up, you know, going through all the way to the data analysis part. And 10 out of 13 identified alcohol and nicotine. And marijuana was actually identified as the most dangerous substance. So, and then, then we asked about things like availability and location. Where are you getting your substances and where are you using them? So, here, you'll see on the left-hand side, we have availability and access, right? And on the right-hand side, we have location of use. You'll see the light-colored squares indicate the responses that were more often validated by interviewees. So, we have folks saying that they're- So, we have folks saying that they're getting their substances from older siblings and using fake IDs. There's also mention of parents, right, with and without permission. And then, the youth identified using the substances at home or at a friend's home. They did, of course, mention the backyard wooded areas and the bathrooms at schools is not new information, but so, and then next, please. So, then, we're kind of doing a little bit of mirroring of the results. This is the parent-focused group, so we asked that same question. What substances are youth using in Medfield that concern you the most? So, if alcohol, marijuana identified, and then vaping, which I think is pretty synonymous with the nicotine mentioned in the last slide. And then, we asked them about where do you think youth are using? Where are they using these substances? And they said, "Oh, at home." That was the one that was endorsed the most, right? They also mentioned the backyard wooded areas and that there might be some use in cars, right? And so, that's a little bit of a different perspective, but I think it does reflect some of the other things we've heard. Next slide. All right, so here's the juicy stuff. This is the stuff I like. So, these are, each one of these topics are questions we asked, right? We asked about community norms, favorable attitudes, mental health, all that sort of thing, and these were our key takeaways. So, where in Kyler's slides, you would see the data, right? You'd have your graph. This is the money shot, right? In addition to the other slides we just showed you. But here, what we're seeing is that youth think the community really sees youth substance use as a normal part of growing up. It's accepted. Youth who use substances are considered cool. Youth use substances not just as an, just because it's an accepted part of growing up, but also because they're using them to cope with mental health challenges, with stress from school, and in order to fit in with other groups. And that, they identified parent and adult conversations with youth about substance use is a protective factor. So, if we remember back to what Kyler was saying, they want those conversations. That's actually gonna reduce their use. They want to know what you think, right? And then, we said, this was interesting, we said, "What do you think is the community's role in prevention?" And some kids were stumped. Some had really, like, right-away answers. It's, it's kind of a new framework to think about. And they said, "You know, I guess they could, the community could help by reshaping norms around substance use." Things about how a lot of the adult events are, have alcohol at them, right? They said, "You know, if you're trying to impact our youth, well, message, direct the messages at us, right? Talk directly to us." And then, also, in those adult conversations that are so protective and important to us, let's have deeper conversations, supportive ones, that ask questions like, "How are you doing? Why? Why are you using a substance? Is everything okay? Do you need help?" Right? I think oftentimes, if we all, we come from places of fear, right? And we want to keep our kids safe and healthy, but they appreciate, you know, you thinking about all the parts of them. So, I think that was just a really good reflection of kind of what came up there. All right, next one, please. Thank you. I don't know who's doing it. Oh, yes! So, I'm just gonna give you guys a second to read this. I'm not gonna talk. You don't have to read it all. These are some of the direct quotes from the youth. So, you're seeing things, these are the sort of things that were tagged to create the last slide, mentioning peer pressure, using them to escape reality, reduce the pressure of school. And then, they, they're pointing out some protective factors, things that actually might help. You know, let's make it not normal, right? They're mentioning alcohol is pretty normalized, alcohol use. Let's, let's come up with some other coping ideas, some other coping mechanisms, and let's, let's talk to our parents about it, or more, have our parents talk to us. All right, next slide, please. All right, so then, in an attempt to mimic kind of the data of the previous slides, this is in relation to our focus groups. These are three topics we asked specifically about. So, we asked about, "What's Medfield community like?" Period, right? So, we got some answers, right? Up there, it talks about Medfield community being a bubble, right? And in our conversations, we talked about that being a risk factor and a protective factor, right? But here, they're indicating that there's some fear when you leave the bubble. They also indicated that Medfield's a place with a lot of family and societal pressure. And then, we said, "Well, what about your youth conversations? Have you guys had conversations with youth? How is that for you? When's the last time you talked to your kid?" And parents brought up this idea that actually modeled behavior is really important, right? We have these conversations, but how we act also sends a message. And they also said, you know, parenting teens is hard, right? I don't know if any of you have teens, have had teens, are about to have teens. I don't have any yet. It's hard, right? So, they said, "You know, all those topics that were on the Metro West Adolescent Health Survey, we need help. How do we talk about substance use? But also, how do we talk about internet safety? And how do we talk about safe sex and, and all that, going off to college, like, decision-making, right? All these sorts of things." So, they were seeking information, but not just around substance use. And then, we said, "Have you ever talked to other parents about substance use? Have you ever said, 'Hey, what is your rule at your house?'" And there wasn't too much endorsement of that. I think maybe when folks' kids were little, that happened a little bit more, but they said, "You know, I, I think that would be great. Let's create a space for that, and let's, give us some help about how to have that conversation." So, those are some things that came out of the focus groups. We go to the next slide, thank you. No, no, you're good. So, this is our attempt to capture kind of just what came out of the focus group versus what was directly asked. So, the last slide, again, were responses to kind of the questions we posed. These are general musings, things that kind of came out and were endorsed over and over. So, in Medfield, there's this work-hard-play-hard mentality, right? Adults socialize with alcohol, which might normalize it for youth. They probably supply the youth with alcohol whether they mean to or not. Fake IDs are easy to get. Older siblings, right? Those two fake IDs, older siblings, if anyone out there is listening, write that one down. Also, let's see, youth behavioral, favorable attitudes, they said, "What do you think youth, why are they using? What's going on there?" And you'll see, they know, they talk about the normalizing it as part of growing up, which the youth also indicated, and the idea that they're seeking to fit in with peers, but there's not really a mention of that other why, right? Like, that it might be used to reduce pressure or deal with another behavioral or mental health issue. And then, we said, "What about parent attitudes?" And they said, you know, there's this, this culture sometimes where parents introduce their, their kids to substances before they're gonna go off to college, right, as a way to keep them safe. And then, they're also, the same idea of trying to keep kids safe or safer, where a lot of parents allow youth to use in their homes, because again, it's that transportation piece, it's being monitored. So, these are kind of the, the, I don't know, the parental attitudes, right, that came up in our, our focus group. We'll leave it at that. All right, next slide, please. I'm trying to hurry for you guys. So, this is our takeaway, right? So, if you look on the left-hand side, these are some of our takeaways from the qualitative and quantitative, right? We know that historically, anyway, Medfield youth tend to use at a higher rate than our regional partners, right? Binge drinking, alcohol, marijuana, and electronic vapes. We also know that, like in many other communities and across the nation, substance use increases with age, and that our trends don't necessarily mirror those of the Metro West. So, there's something happening here in our community, right? And then, in terms of risk factors, things that came up in the research were mental health challenges, stress from school, peer pressure, community acceptance of substance use for youth, and then also potentially modeling. And then, this idea about access, right? Kyler, I remember, talked about those 2021 data results, access and availability impact use, right? So, that's kind of a key takeaway here, and we learned more information about how that's happening. And then, in terms of protective factors, youth-focused messaging, adult-youth conversations, and actually doing that hard work of figuring out what are our community norms and how do we kind of reshape them, right? That's, I'm making that face, none of you can see me up there, but just because it's, that's complex and nuanced and very private, potentially, if you think back to that slide about family versus community. All right, so I think the next one is, in conclusion, I'm gonna read this, you're just gonna have to bear with me, because this is the rally cry. Here we go. "In conclusion, as adults, we have a responsibility to do everything we can to make sure our young people grow up to have healthy, strong futures. And one thing that stands in the way of that is alcohol and other drug use. Substance use can negatively affect young people's school performance, future job prospects, and physical and mental health, damaging their lives well into adulthood. But together, this is something we can prevent from happening. It is our job to support policies and programs that prevent and reduce alcohol and other drug use among our Medfield adolescents." So, that is taken from a framework that really works in prevention, right? So, we're trying to call you into this, right? We all have a, we're thinking about risk and protective factors, right? You don't have to necessarily look at, I don't, at all the pieces, right, to just begin to have the conversation. So, if you just hit next slide, "What's your role?" So, you'll see here on the left, just a quick orientation. If you scan that, it'll start an email to, to us to get, to get the conversation started. If you want to learn more about our MCAP coalition, we always are looking for new people. If you just have a question, and then that middle one is, it'll direct you to the Massachusetts Substance Use Helpline, which is a great place for treatment. You also notice, though, that we put up there the email from Medfield Outreach, so we know that those systems are hard to navigate, so just give us a call or send an email. And then, the last one, just a little tip for anyone who's ready, there's some information on that in the last QR code about how to have conversations with your kids. So, if you feel inspired or just want to see if you've been doing it right all along, go take a peek. And then, one more slide, stay connected. These are a Medfield Outreach connection. So, we do have the link to the full strategic plan and community needs assessment results online, that's all there for you. And then, again, you can email us with anything. Are there any questions?
I do have one. When you were comparing the Medfield numbers to Metro West, let's just say, if all schools were the same number of enrollment, and you got 20 from each, then you could say that you're comparing the legitimate numbers to legitimate numbers. But when you look at Medfield being small and Metro West, correct me if I'm wrong, when I say this, like Framingham, Natick, which are much bigger towns, are the numbers in alignment to say that we are doing more based on the size of the town that we're being compared against, or is it strictly the numbers that were being, that responded to the survey town by town?
You want to? Kyler, sorry, he is studying data for his job, I mean, his, cool. It made complete sense. I'm gonna let Kyler take it, and then if I have something to add, I'll. But I think the answer is yes. My guess is that 20% of 800 people is the same as 20% of 80.
Right, yeah, exactly that. So, yeah, the, the numbers are just in the proportion of students who, you know, reported drinking or vaping, using marijuana. And so, it's, it's important to keep in mind, the survey is a census, so it surveyed almost every student at the school. So, although, you know, of course, there's differences in the number of students enrolled at each school, you know, they're comparable in terms of the proportion of students who are using substances. Does that?
Yeah, that helps. And then, the other, my follow-up would be, do you have a breakdown by town so you can get a feel for our, our certain towns following a pattern versus other towns? And I'm not trying to say affluent versus non-affluent, but like, you may have more towns that are blue collar than white collar and have, and you may have, just to access points.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm just like, ready to go, because that's, that's exactly right. I think, oh my gosh, I just blanked. Thank you! Well, you take it for a second.
It's not our data.
Oh, I remember now.
It's the school's data. We don't have the rights. When they release it, it becomes everybody's data, which is why we were able to use the Metro West data that's current, but not the schools have it released yet. They're working on it, they're working on lots of things. So, the same would be true of other towns until they release it. If they choose to release that, oh, I'm sorry, I'm breaking my own rule. If they choose to release that data and make it public, then anybody can, can Google it and search it. So, that really varies, because ultimately, someone paid for that data, right? And so, they own it, and they decide what they do with it, and that can vary from, from town to town. So, we don't, yeah, we don't have everybody's but.
But, thank you. I really lost it there. I was like, getting excited by your energy. I will tell you that we are involved in the Norfolk DA's coalition, group of coalitions, and what we've been trying to do there is actually create a dashboard so that we can do this with the school. But the first thing would need, the schools would need to feel comfortable releasing their data, because exactly what Kathy says, it speaks about Medfield, right? It speaks about our kids, so we like to have control over that story, understandably. So, I think what happens is, right now, we have the access to the Metro West data, because it just speaks generally about Metro West. We have our Medfield data, but we're hoping through these networks like the Norfolk DA, and there's also a, what's it called, Metro West Health Foundation that does a lot of this data work, to see if, if towns and schools would be comfortable sharing data like that, because exactly what you're saying is, if we think back to Kyler's slide of all those circles, our conditions in Medfield are very specific. They're very, like, they're not the same as Westwood, as Walpole, as anything, even with the same demographics, because we are set in this setting, right? There's just so much history, there's so much, there's a lot. So, I think something like that would actually be very valuable. And actually, that reminds me, our next bit of prevention work around substance misuse is Kyler and I have been meeting with groups around creating a logic model. We're looking at the root causes as to the why, to, again, just, this is something we do every few years to navigate, you know, make sure our strategic plan is pointed in the right direction. So, I think that's where we're gonna get to a lot of that, and you're invited, and so is everyone.
So, then, one more question. When you think about peer pressure, if you know the person sitting across from you, you maybe have pressure to respond one way or another. And I would even think that's gonna be true with parents. So, have, so have you had the opportunity or considered kind of mixing it up? Maybe having some Medfield people talk with some Foxborough parents?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
So, I think that's exact, like, we're trying to make this as de-stigmatized, as welcoming, and as open as possible. It's hard, because sub, people, not everybody thinks substance use is a bad choice for youth, right? Not every, everyone has their own relationship with substances. Substances are legal, a lot of them. When I think about our Suicide Prevention Coalition, it's a lot easier to rally people. Nobody wants any suicide in our world, right? Easy peasy. So, I think part of it is actually getting folks to come to the table in a way that they feel open enough, and so, we've been exploring that. And Kathy, I know, is doing that as other part of our outreach work, because in a small town like this, it can be scary to show up to a place, even to try to learn more, right? Because of the, the parent sitting across from the parent, right? Because whose kid is there? So, we, we actually think about that a lot, is how do we get folks to the table?
You don't want to be judged, and, and, and it's so, it's so near and dear that you want, everyone to protect their child, right? Or, or you want to protect somebody else's child that maybe the parent's looking beyond it, and you see that this young man or, or young boy, I should say, or girl, the parents don't care, but you care, right? But yet, how do you go around, and maybe being in a different town, you're a little more open to conversation?
Yeah, that's part of it. We're trying to do some virtual stuff. I think a lot of it is doing some information sharing and education in a way that isn't necessarily back and forth, so that maybe people can take it in without having to get too close, right? So, we're, this is, this is the work, right? That is, that's the work, right there. So, any ideas? Bring them over this way.
Sure. This is super helpful.
Oh, yeah, exactly. Yeah, starting with younger, parents of younger children. So, we want you in our MCAP coalition. Come, join us.
Well, and have you, one last question. I keep, yeah, no, I'm, we'll talk all day. But like, so this particular business organization I was in, we did Help Me Help You, right? And so, if you were more of a senior member, and you had a newer member, you'd share a scenario, and would say, you know, "Help me help you. This is what I did. This is what I learned." So, if you're gonna be starting with younger parents, wouldn't it be ideal to have the third-grade parent talk to the freshman, or the middle school, the high school, the senior, so that you can kind of catch the early signals, you can try to get ahead of it?
And we find that, we actually, we had a group, remember this? It was a few years ago, we did a group where we just invited people in to talk about substance use and give them some information about prevention, and that happened naturally.
Good.
The folks that were there, we realized we didn't want people who had the same age children, because there was a lot of, "Well, what did you do? Oh, I could thi," you know, and that's what we want. We want people to feel open enough to explore. So, yeah, these are great ideas. You also think about doing some, like, coffees or something that where you just, again, just come and talk, right? Or lump it with other topics. That's another good one. So, all the ideas, we'll take them all.
Gus, you have another question?
I can't believe it.
Pete's next.
Oh, okay.
We go in order.
I was wondering. Pete, do you have any questions?
You all set, Lyle?
I'm all set.
So, what jumped out at me, Mary, was the, the slide, and Tyler, where you were comparing the Medfield to the other towns, state, and national numbers, and we were higher, and we were significantly higher.
Yeah.
So that, I think that that tells me we have a problem in Medfield. And we need to figure out, it, we owe it to our adolescents, our youth, to figure out how to help them deal with it. And to not, because the statistics are clear that, as you pointed out, the sooner you start drinking or, or using, the more likely you are to have addiction problems later in life, unfortunately.
Which can impact every area of your life.
Yep. And I just saw a show on Channel Two this week where kids in their 30s, kids, adults in their 30s were showing up with liver disease.
Yep.
And doctors were just incredulous because it looked like, you know, people in their 60s.
Yeah, sorry, I was just thinking about how cool would it be if we had grown, grown adults who said, oh, I'm gonna have a drink to enjoy myself for a moment, not, oh, I had a really bad day, I need a drink, right? Like, what if we had other options?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's interesting.
Yeah, so if we can somehow help the kids to deal in a, in a more healthy way with their lives, I, I think we just owe it as, as adults to help our, our younger people in our community, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for working on it.
So I have kind of a combination of comments and questions, I guess. First comment, you know, in the interest of stimulating the discussion, I will, I will make one comment, my reaction to all of this at one level, and I'm not trying to make it, I'm not trying to overmake the point. These points would have been true 55 years ago when I was a kid about that age.
Yep.
So in some ways, the picture. Yeah, in some ways, the picture at the general level around kids feeling peer pressure and therefore needing to do this, having access and going here, fake, oh, nine yards. It's not different. The point one, I'm not a statistician, but I'm gonna react to Pete's point about this showing we have a major problem. I believe if you take one specific town and compare it to the average of all the towns in Metro West or even more so in Massachusetts, almost by definition, your town is gonna be divergent from the, the average.
Lower or higher, right?
So we're looking at a mean and we're comparing that. I'm not, I'm not saying that to deny that we are where we are and we're above the average. But what it prompted for me was the point that came out earlier around, it would be nice if we had access to the other individual towns. Because the question is, for me, are there certain towns that share the characteristics that we have here? And if there are, I'm actually more interested in the ones that share the opposite characteristics. And I would like to better understand what is it that those towns do? Perhaps it's demographics or, or economics? Perhaps it's, I don't know what else. But, but we, you know, when you talk Metro West, you're talking about a very diverse group of communities. Folding that all in, part of me would have said, well, I would have thought we would have been better because there's probably some rougher towns out there.
Yeah.
Part of me said, well, maybe some people, some kids have a definition of binge drinking that's an order of magnitude higher. So when they say no, it's not the same.
We define it on the survey, though.
Yeah, I assume that. But my point is, it would be nice to see if we could get to the root cora, cause characteristics of a community that results in this.
That's what we're doing right now with our logic model.
And, and the, where my head goes on this, because I think you all, just by your nature, you're looking at analyzing things and figuring out what interventions you can do to fix the problem.
Yes.
Where my head is going to, what is it about our community?
Yes.
The problem wasn't this bad, even though the attitudes were the same, the problems, I don't think, where it's bad, I mean, vaping didn't exist.
Didn't you just say the data was the same?
Harder drugs existed, but, say again?
I thought you just said that the problem was just as bad when you were.
No, I said the perspectives were the same.
Oh, the perspective, okay.
So when we, you know, peer pressure, and I'm, I'm struggling with this actually on a broader level in our society and even in our community. Because I look, six, six-year-olds who shoot people. I can't get there with my own experience when I was a kid. I can't get there because there was a moral grounding that a six-year-old would never have gotten to that point, even though we probably watched more Westerns, but we didn't play violent video games. I, I'm trying to understand.
There's gonna be some data to answer that question, too, if we looked into it.
But for our purposes, where my head is going, is are there community institutions, talking Boy Scouts, I'm talking churches, I'm talking other, you know, four age clubs, whatever, is there anything at that level that gets to kids that maybe aren't as popular or aren't as broadly participated in? Or it feels to me like there's something that we've lost, not in what you all are doing, you're more sophisticated, but that core foundation feels to me like it's shallower than it used to be. And I'm trying to.
I think that's.
Put my finger on it.
You know, I think that's really interesting. This is exactly how we think, right? We ha, we say, okay, that's a number, but that's just a number, right? Like, what is happening? And I think every individual circumstance is different, but I think, I think you're, you're asking all the right questions, you know? And I, I think that there's a few things, just quickly to say, is that the potency of marijuana is very different. So the actual impact can be more severe and more significant of the substances we now have, with the technologies we now have. I also think there's something to be said about, I mean, we live in a virtual world, a lot, right? So there's a lot of these connections that normally would happen, kind of probably naturally or just, you know, you're waiting for the bus or you're, you know, interactions with other adults and less time alone, maybe, right? So there's a lot of stuff. And actually, I really, if you are interested, I know you can't all come at once, but if anyone is interested in doing that, that's exactly what we're doing. We don't want to have a, an evidence-based solution based on a binge drinking number that doesn't meet our community. We really understand that fit and how important that is. And that's why we've been moving so slowly, right? That's why, I mean, we're doing a lot of stuff. We actually took out a slide and just listed it all. But I think a big piece is having these conversations of sitting down with folks and saying, what was your experience when you were young? And what do you see happening in Medfield now? And, and just having those conversations. And, and that's how we get to the root cause, is by having different perspectives of people brainstorming. And so I think that's exactly how we do. And I actually, I would wonder, so part of, I think, the sharing with other towns would be that we would have to be willing to share our data, too. So that's just something to think about. And then the other piece is, I'm intrigued by this idea. I don't know if, I know there's job alikes in the schools, I don't know if that's a term that exists here, but you have other select boards or towns that you do think mimic our culture and some of our demographics? We'll go and take a look, right? Like, if, if there's a town that you think fits, like, let us know. Or one that feels opposite, or someone you have a connection with that might be willing to speak with us, that, we're always open. So it's a great idea.
Do. And they have a lot of research around this grant and the strategic framework, prevention framework, and the ways that these folks are trained and the steps, there's certain criteria that we have to use in our prevention work because it is supported through research. And some of these other communities that have finished their 10 years of funding have demonstrated reduction in youth substance use. So some of these strategies, we know work. We haven't seen it here yet, right? Where we're still waiting on the data. And I think, you know, there's a lag in, in getting results. I mean, these kids took these MOS in the fall and school doesn't even get the results until months later, you know, things, things are delayed. So that's, that's one thing to answer some of your questions, like, who's doing it well and how do we know? Great question. Like, what, let's copy what's working, right? And then the other thing is, I agree with you that some of these things are, are as old as time, some of these. But what we know now about brain science is leaps and bounds beyond what we knew. So it's sort of, especially in an educated community like Medfield, when parents have this information, I think it, it's a call to action that maybe they're now aware of ways in which what we thought was just harmless experimentation is really changing the structure of the brain with repetitive use or, or binging kind of use. And we know that parents and caregivers in this community want nothing but success for their kids. So yeah, I think that those are the two things that jumped to my mind with your, yeah.
Thanks, Mary.
Cool. And again, we invite everyone into the conversation, especially through our coalition, that we want community involvement. Yeah, yeah. Thanks for letting us talk. And also, just, just come, just come.
That's excellent, thank you.
Yeah, wonderful, thank you. And invite us back, we won't talk as long.
Thank you very much.
Also, there's some resource cards, Medfield-specific resource cards and brochures.
Okay, next item we have on the board as a discussion item, potential votes, discussion of the Dog Control Bylaw Committee.
True.
You want to start?
I think we've had some informal discussions at the last few selectmen's meetings, but I think you need to formally have a discussion about forming the committee. I know you have, currently have appointed three. We do have an appointment this evening, but it's not realistic at this point to continue with this for the 2023 town meeting. But I don't think that means we don't get them started working right away as we move towards 2024. So we've had a few questions lately from people asking what our plan was for the committee, so I just wanted to, to give you an update and see where you were on that.
You want me to start?
Sure.
We'll do this the opposite way. So I, a lot of people in the town have been very interested in this committee or in dog control. As a dog owner, but somebody who doesn't think dogs should be able to drive town residents off of the state hospital property, I've kind of got a, I think I can see sort of both sides of the issue. And my, my personal interest in this around dog control was not to have a group of people who have a preconceived notion that all happen to be on the same side of the seesaw.
Right.
And, and to go there. We've had, from my perspective, we have had some dog groups. The one that comes to the top of the list for me, VisWiz is a group that I think has been responsible in how it's done things. They've tended to adjust their activities to avoid confrontations. Plus on top of that, they, as a group, have gone and cleaned the, the state hospital up. And I'll say, at a deference, I think Pete, you're the one that broadened the scope here. I'm sort of talking about the state hospital, but actually, this dog control committee is for all, at, at the very least, it's all open space. Pete, I know you'd like it to be just broadly everything, dog control everywhere, but we have this one issue of dog confrontations on open space, Noon Hill, behind Wheelock, at the state hospital, and, and the situation is the same. So, so you have some, a lot of dog owners who have a very strong interest in wanting to be able to let their dogs run free. You have people in Medfield who may or may not have dogs, because some of them do, but they want to be able to walk their dog on a leash and not worry about being confronted. And then other people don't have dogs and either don't like dogs, or at the very least don't have dogs and don't necessarily want to go to the state hospital to interact with dogs, and they would like to be left alone. And so trying to balance all of those interests across all of the different properties we have. And then there's one additional group, which are people, in the case of the state hospital at least, who live close enough and are adjacent enough to the state hospital that there are times when they find themselves dealing with dogs that are not theirs in their yards. And if they own chickens, then it becomes even more interesting in what they're gonna do when the dogs come in. So we have a butters on open space that have almost a unique set of interests that are above and beyond. And I believe we have a new member that would, I think, be a good representative for that that we're looking at. So I was actually happy to see that. So if we, so we currently are at four, including.
Four tonight.
So before, as of tonight. That's a pretty small committee, given all the interest in the dog issue in town, but the absence of people coming together to actually get on the committee to work through the issues, I would be inclined, I think, to go ahead and form this committee with four, with the understanding that if people finally understand, we actually have a committee that's doing something, if they come forward and say they would like to be on it, that we would be open to that. And if the committee, in getting started and doing work, basically says we have a voice that's missing here, we, we'll be able to come up with this recommendation, but it's gonna get blown out of the water when it goes before the public unless we figure out a way to vet this and let more members of the public understand the voices have all been heard and here's how we did the trade-offs. Therefore, when we're looking for approval, even if you don't like exactly what the committee came up with, if you understand that the process they used to get their included voices of people who think about this the same way you do, the likelihood that those people will be prepared to support that overall output gets higher.
Oh, yeah.
So that's where, and, and I agree, we're probably not working off of a 23 deadline, a, you know, annual town meeting for 23 unless this is a super fast committee and, and something happens. The other point, as far as the state hospital goes, and then in 24, if, my comments earlier in the meeting notwithstanding, if we in fact have a project up at the state hospital and Trinity is getting things underway, a certain amount of the issues up at the state hospital will go away as it relates to the QUAD. It might get worse in all the open space, I don't know. So I don't, I, I still think it's a relevant issue, but some of the specific issues we'll have with the QUAD after another year. I think they're a mood point, and once that is up and running, I don't think the current issues will just land there when people are living there and it's a neighborhood rather than a bunch of abandoned buildings that is kind of fun to walk around.
Well, no, but I think Jill, coming forward, is huge because it is the butters that, that they, they, in my opinion, when I heard you were offered, I'm like, okay, that's ideal because we've got a professional dog walker in Medfield who has seen the good and the bad. We've got a, a butter who sees what, how people feel entitled to certain things and on property that shouldn't, giving that viewpoint is awesome. I believe there's someone that used to have a dog, doesn't have a dog anymore. So the four people that are being represented, I think, have a really healthy conversation. And then as that conversation broadens, we may see somebody that butts the Wheelock property go, whoa, you know what? Let me give you what's going on there. So I, I just, you know, I've been press, popping into like, okay, where are we with the dog committee? The sooner we get the conversation going, the higher likelihood we may have people, because either you guys are approaching people up at the state hospital, or there's something put, maybe in the patch or whatever that's drawing the conversation forward. So I just, I'm happy that if we say effective tonight, the four can start getting, you know, getting together and whether it needs to be, if you want me to spearhead it, try to get people going or leave it up to the four, I just want to make sure we start moving on it.
Pete?
I don't know if, there was, there was someone that expressed interest in this committee today. I don't know if she's one of the four?
No.
Okay.
Well, you approved three on September 27th. We have an appointment tonight. And then it was too late to add anybody's name to the agenda this afternoon.
So that, there was an email exchange with me today from Kate Pittman, who's a vet in town. Kate Pittman.
Okay, okay.
And she lives on Elm Street, right next to Wheelock, so she fits the, the model of someone that is.
A butter.
That's a butter of Wheelock and, and a, a neighbor of Wheelock. And, and she, I mean, she has an interest because of her advocacy for dogs, basically, and, and dog owners.
Is that the only name? Yeah, okay.
So we may actually, we, we may get to five quickly. Tonight, we have one appointment to consider. Just to Eileen's point, Eileen, if you would, if you're willing to take the lead, just that, the point here is just to get a, sometimes committees don't know that it's time to get organized and get started, but if you're willing to do that, I'm happy to have you do that.
Yeah, I, I have no problem. I do it just to get everyone going and then I'll back away and I, you know, it's, and it's the committee coming forward later to the selectment. But I don't want to make it feel like I'm gonna be the voice, I just want to make sure it gets going. Okay.
We're good with that?
Yep.
Okay. Then I think the only vote is to appoint Jill.
Mm-hmm.
So we, if you go down to item nine B on our agenda, vote to appoint Jill Radosta to Dog Leash Bike, it's Dog.
Dog Control.
Dog Control Bylaw Committee. Don't want to presuppose the answers that this committee comes up with. Dog Control Bylaw Committee, we have a motion.
It actually says Bylaw Review Committee on our.
Bylaw Review Committee. Dog Control Bylaw Review Committee.
I was just calling it the Dog Committee because I didn't know better today. So I would vote to appoint Jill Radosta to that committee, whatever it's called.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Welcome aboard, Jill.
Thank you, Jill.
Thank you for stepping forward.
Next item is the School Building Committee Next Steps. I think, I think that's in my-
That's your wheelhouse, yeah.
So, this is sort of reporting, you, I think you both know that, in the interest of simply expediting the process of getting the School Building Committee up and running, Anna May and I and Scott have had some informal discussions that fell short of any sort of a formal committee doing things, you know, basically talking about what we should be doing to try to get this School Building Committee. Initially, it was the discussions around how we were going to go about appointing the members of the committee, and then now, since we've appointed the complete committee, talking about how to get the committee started. So, the appointments, I believe, if I remember right, the last appointments from the School Committee came in at the beginning of December, December 3rd or the 7th. Speaking personally, I figured, well, going into the holidays, it's probably not the time to start kicking the committee into gear, but then right after New Year's, Scott reached out and talked about, you know, should we have some sort of a, you know, an initial kickoff meeting? We talked about that, Anna May thought that was a good idea, I thought that was a good idea. We tossed around the idea of having, as we often do with committees that we form, we ask one member of the committee to serve as the initial chair for purposes of calling together the kickoff meeting. And so, the, the logical choice that I thought we had there was Mike Weber, because Mike has been, Mike was on the, he's first from the Purd and Planning and Building Committee, but he was also on the committee last time, so he's sort of the one source of corporate knowledge. So, we agreed that that made sense. I had a pretty high degree of confidence that neither of you would be irate if we asked Mike to do that, so-
Oh, totally fine.
They asked me to reach out to Mike to see if he would be willing to do that. I did. Mike got back to me and said, yes, I'm not sure about the, whether the permit, you know, not sure about the permanent thing, but I'm more than happy to be the acting chair for the first meeting. We tossed around that the, basically, there should be an initial meeting in the next two weeks, and that got pushed out a little bit by Mike. He said, it'd be nice if we could let it go out to like the 23rd, so that's how we, it's basically, it's two weeks from today, more or less, is what we're talking about. Anna May suggested that it might be appropriate for each, because the three of us are talking, she put it as the three of us, but as far as I'm concerned, it's, it would be fine for all three of us to be there and don't even really care who has, who wants to talk. But basically, I think her suggestion was to thank the members for being willing to serve, you know, assure them of our collective appointing authority support for their efforts, and, fine, starts now, so move ahead. The, I think one of the challenges the committee's going to have, especially because the people on it, with the exception of Mike, don't have direct experience with MSBA, to my knowledge, I'm not sure about Tony, but we are not in the MSBA program.
Right.
So, this committee is going to be moving ahead with the first stages of designing or developing a new school project without automatically having some sort of a procedures manual coming in that's specified by the MSBA. I think they'll be able to figure that out, but I don't think that's a trivial thought process to go through and say, okay, what do we do for the first, you know, six to nine months? They have a little bit of money to spend, but we, we haven't, we might put some money into it, I guess, at the town meeting, but whether, whether that's appropriate at this early stage in the process to fundamentally fund a feasibility study, or if it is, what kind of feasibility study, how much funding, that's, I think, still an open, open issue. So, that's kind of the update. If anything that I said on our behalf is contradicts what you would have wished I had said on our behalf, speak now.
Well, no, I think what you said, I think one thing you said that's really important to, to make sure we're sending the signal out to the community is, I hope that we all do support. I support who we selected. I support who the school committee selected. I certainly support who Scott selected, and I'd like to think that all the groups can do it. So, going into this, we feel confident that based on what we voted on in the town meeting that said, we're going to have a table, we're going to feel comfortable that anyone watching one of these meetings can say, I feel represented at that table. If that's not true, then that red flag needs to be raised now before we go too far down this path.
I don't believe, to my, from my perspective, I don't believe Scott or Anna May have any reservations whatsoever. I certainly don't. I think, I think because so many of them are brand new at being on a building committee, they're going to have some forming, storming, norming, performing challenges to get that team pulled together to, to function well, but that's got more to do with just getting organized and understanding each other well enough and how they, how things work.
Okay.
Who from the town is going to staff the, the building committee?
Christine?
Me.
You, okay.
Yeah, let's see, the pro, the ex officio-
Ex officio is Superintendent Dr. Marsden and myself.
So, so one process thing that's interesting relative to the bylaw review, if you have any thoughts, it would be good, because I've also had this preliminary discussion with Scott and Anna May. The bylaw has specified who's on the committee, at least up until such time as the MSBA might tell us to add others. There are two ex officio members specified in the bylaw that are now ex officio members on the committee, that's Christine and Dr. Marsden. Should that committee want to add ex officio members, or for that matter, should that committee want to appoint someone else, I don't, I don't think they're going to go there. But if they wanted additional members, if there's any need for some new member to be authorized to join that committee-
Non-voting.
Well, that would be the easiest scenario. Let's assume it's that. The, the question is in the bylaw, how does that, how would that happen?
No authority for it.
There's no provision for it, so the, the conference, the thought that I had on that went in two directions. One option is that all three appointing authorities would come together and basically make a consensus appointment, which is, well, Mark, we're going to have to do this one way or the other, so we're trying to figure out the right way that will be consistent with what we think people want, that will not have us be violating some rule that's going to be challenged in court by somebody who doesn't like how we do it.
Why are you expecting that we have to add more people?
The reason was because we got a volunteer, someone who volunteered to be an ex officio communications member. Now, we said, no, there's no provision for that, and it's not appropriate, but I can picture, I can picture this committee at some point saying, you know, we actually do need to organize around getting our, you know, one of the lessons from the last time is to not, you know, we didn't do as good a job as we needed to to communicate. So, the scenario I picked, so the point that I made, Mark, if there's legal, if we're just in a legal canyon, tell us that, but it doesn't make sense.
It's law.
Well-
It's a bylaw, it was, it was, you know, it was submitted in that form and negotiated in response, and that's what the town passed. And yes, they have, you've boxed yourselves into that.
So, if it comes up, we're going to have another legal debate with Mark again to see whether we just want to be outlaws and disregard the whole thing and make decisions and see who's going to stop us. The point that I wanted to get on the table for you to think about, not to do anything right now, one option would be all three appointing authorities would deal with that request and act in consensus, which is, the closest to the authority that the bylaw gave us was the, it split the authority, so the only way to kind of be consistent with that spirit would be to bring them all together. The alternative would be to go back to the originating article that gave rise to the bylaw review committee that asked for two things. One of them was to have the town moderator being the appointing authority for the building committee. So, when I talked with Anna May and Scott, their view was they thought it was better to have all three. I'm not looking for an answer tonight, I'm putting that on the table for you as a potential scenario. Those are the two options that I've seen that would get us, you're absolutely right, Mark, this scenario, this particular circumstance was not foreseen and addressed in the bylaw. What I'm actually trying to do is to see what would we do in that circumstance that would be the most, have the highest fidelity with what the intentions behind the bylaw were in order to act in accordance with what they were.
I would suggest one, a third option, that is, if you, if you are perceiving this as a potential, a realistic potential, get an article on for the town meeting to amend that bylaw.
That's exactly what I was going to say. That makes the most sense.
Then we can, then we can add that.
Even if we have to reopen the warrant to do it.
We haven't closed the warrant.
Well, I know, but I mean-
So, your comments are timely.
Well, I would have suggested the same thing. We're so close to another town meeting, and this, this committee's going to be together for a couple of years, so let's just get ahead of it, do it the right way, not leave anybody open to poke at this two or three years down the road, and it's not worth it.
So, the other way to approach it is to just have people attend the meetings and, and work on it. They don't have to be a committee member.
That, that would be the other way to do it. I, I was, I, what, the only, the only thing that sent my, me down this path was when we got someone who volunteered and said, I'd like to be an ex officio member in this area, communications, and it's like, well, there's no provision for an ex officio member in communications, and actually, communications was kind of an important lesson learned from the last project, so maybe we ought to not have that be an obstacle, so.
Okay.
That was, but, but let's, let's do it that way. We'll add the article, and that way we square the circle there.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments about the School Building Committee?
Nope, happy to get, move now.
I have, I have the action to kind of close the loop with Mike Weber, and I think he'll then have the action to call the meeting, but we'll, I don't have a date for that yet.
I would just share that I think it's great that it's getting going, it needs to get going, it needs to be moving.
And I think you both are aware, but the, the public may not be, the MSBA reached out to us this year and told us we had not been readmitted to the program for this year.
Surprise, surprise.
Not, not a surprise, but if anybody was wondering, we, we did not get readmitted this year, and we were, the statement of interest for next year has to be in, it's in April.
End of April.
End of April, so I anticipate that the school department and the school committee will be moving to re-generate another SOI to take another run next, next year's selections. Okay, good.
Okay, so did you see the request?
No, thank you.
I think you did, but I just wanted to make sure.
You know, I was channeling, if I get it right, I was obviously channeling somebody, yeah, please, I didn't see this. Hey, Chris, way ahead of you. We, I think we did all that, let me make sure.
Oh, my gosh.
Members, including, I think she wrote the article that she'd like us to put in, this kind of, okay, hey, we, we got it, thank you. And thank you, Eileen, for once again, keeping track of this, because I never set this thing up like I should. All right. Next item is follow-up discussion of the 2023 town goals. I sent, the packet had the update, my intent in this update was to take all of the comments that were said last week and merely incorporate them, so if there's anything that feels editorial on my, my part in here, it was unintentional. And in the case of the sixth goal area, because I had reacted to Hilly's feedback on that, I did something slightly different in that sixth goal area. What I did was I kept Hilly's stuff, overwrote her stuff where I had comments, but I didn't delete it, so-
Right.
When you see something that's crossed out, I crossed it out last week at the meeting, but the stuff I crossed out is what Hilly said, because to, we, we've talked earlier today, but actually, as I was doing this, it was like, well, this is what Hilly thinks it should be, so I didn't want to lose it.
Right.
But also, I didn't want to lose my reaction to it, so that's what's there. And you both actually got a Word document of this, so that you could in fact do an electronic version of this, well, I copied you on the, on the version that's here.
Right.
That got put into the packet. So, I guess I'll open it up just maybe for you first, Eileen, any, any comments, further inputs? If you've done them on, on track changes, that's great, but-
Mine wasn't taking track changes, and it could have been my word, but just to confirm, so I don't have an issue with the, with the edits that you made to, all the way through, and then when we get to the new goal, which is the maintain environmental quality and sustainability for our community.
Yep.
When we get to that, something I was talking to Christine about today is, when I think of these as town goals, they're not selectmen goals, they're really town goals. We have people like Sustainable Medfield, we have groups in town that are doing a lot of this work that, it, it's a great way to come back and educate the selectmen as to what's happening. So, when I see one of these, like, support the state 2030 climate goals, and then ensure Medfield is on track to pursue feasible 2050 net zero goals, my take is, is, as long as we are in line or we're in communication with the, the committees and the groups that are focusing on this, we're keeping ourselves in check. I don't know how to word this in this, but it's, it's working with the committees that are already focused on it and making sure that, are they seeing anything that's preventing us from being in step with what the state's set out? So, it's not even so much our goals, but it's staying in step with what the state is mandating for something like 2030 or 2050. You follow my train of thought?
Yes and no. Because you started by saying, these aren't the selectmen's goals, and then you started to talk like you were-
Well, but they're, they're the town goals, but we lead the town goals, right? So, they're not our goals, so the town's goals, but we represent the town's goals.
Actually, I disagree that we lead these town goals. Some of these goals, this, these are the town goals, these are not the board of selectmen goals.
Wrong words.
So, we're not, many of these things, the, when I first wrote this, the intention was to, the, the third column, which is the actual specific goals-
Yeah.
-that was something Pete and Mike added, and I think that makes it a more usable tool, because we actually have to force ourselves to think about what specifically we're going to do.
Right.
Before that, when I only had the two columns, what I was trying to get to was an articulation of broad goals, and then to distill those down to some more specific long-range goals with the thought that these long-range goals would form a reference that when we were looking at whether we should do X or Y in a particular area, in one of, in these areas, we would say, well, gee, X is supportive or seems to be more in line with where we say we want to go, where Y is not. That was what I originally thought. What then happened, and I think it was an improvement, was that third column got put in, it's like, okay, well, let's get out of the hypothetical world and let's get down to what this all means. In this area of six, I think we've been working on the high-level words, and a lot of it had been reactions, or even this is still drafts in these areas, but we have work to do on this for sure, because we're not down to any specific goals.
And so, the way I looked at it, coming in, every time, so we have an election coming up, we were to get a new selectmen, select, select board member. I would like to think that the town, anyone in this town should be able to look and see, what, what, where's this town going, what are the town, town goals? The three of us are the elected officials that are leading, that's why I say, like, these are the goals, we just need to make sure that-
We're certainly the stewards of the document, without a doubt.
Yes. So, so that it, there's no, like, I don't know, what are we doing? It's very clear, and so even if you're running, right, you look at it and you go, okay, this is what I'm stepping into, there's no mystery. And then it's every year, making sure that we are updating what that, so this is 2022 to 2023, you know, are we on track here? And then as we roll into 2024, that's, that column should be changing, because it's, it's like monitoring your salespeople every year, like, you know, you want to make sure you're keeping them in check and they're, they're attaining their goals and then setting new ones. And then that, that middle column, yeah, that'll slowly evolve, but at least we know in the, in the broader picture what we're trying to achieve.
So, so this is a live example of how I would hope this document could be used by, not just by us, but by anybody. You read out the, and Hilly, you may want to weigh in, because you and I have already partially talked about this issue, but when you talked about the issue, because I had changed some wording here, I'm trying to find where it is, it was the 2030, the pursuit of the state's goals.
But I took, but see, if you-
Oh, support, support the state 2030 climate goals.
And I took, I didn't read by implementing, I just read, because there are, there are 2030 state goals, and there are, and there are 2050 state goals.
Yep.
And so, all we should be doing as a town is seeing where we are. I'm not saying we have to implement certain things or be above and beyond, so when I saw that you crossed out Tomcap, I get that right now, but it still doesn't remove that we are, as a town, we voted in certain things to say that we want to try to stay in step. We have multiple groups in town that are spearheading efforts to try to keep our town at or ahead of what the state's trying to do, whether people like that or not, but I think it's important that we are doing that, that we're not hiding under a rock, that there are a lot of good things going on with Sustainable Medfield and other groups. So, that's why in the 2023 goals on my document, I didn't know how we wanted to add, say, because I look at, a lot of the committees are doing the work for these goals. When we look at whether it be the-
Where is the work, though?
Well, so, give me one sec, give me one sec. So, like, when I look at some of the goals, where we have, like, the Affordable Housing Trust is working on certain things, and there's, I've gotten here, like, the CONCOM can work on certain things when we're looking at trying to protect against wild, so when we look at these, these climate goals, looking, working with Sustainable Medfield, whether it's quarterly updates, whether it's, you know, checking against what our progress should be if we're trying to hit some of the, the lines in the sand, whether it be 30% at 2030, or, I forget what the actual numbers are. Hilly, what, what's the number that we have in the, the goal right now that we're trying to attain by 2030?
So, so the state goal for 2030 is 45% reduction in emissions from 1990 level, which is kind of, it adds another 20% from where we are now. So, we have statewide already 25% reduction just because of the change, cleaning up of our electricity supply. So, the next 20% really comes from, you know, inefficiency measures and electrification using the clean electricity that we have now.
Eileen, I would start by asking, because you said that you, you understand why, why the Tomcap shouldn't be in there, but, I mean, that is our, our town of Medfield Climate Action Plan.
Well, when we agree to it, but right now, it's not approved, so to put something in here that we-
Well, it's been approved. What do you mean, it's not been approved? It hasn't been approved by the Board of Selectmen, it's been approved by the Energy Committee, it's been approved by the Planning Board, it's been approved by a lot of people. The town meeting told us, the Energy Committee's voted it, the Planning Board's voted it. It's been approved by different groups in town.
I didn't realize that, I'll be honest with you.
It hasn't.
Because we've, last I saw was a bunch of edits that I know that Gus made to it, and then I haven't seen anything beyond that. So I didn't know if that, if those edits were ignored, if they're accepted.
It's been published, it's on the website, it's published to the residents.
I think it's still a draft.
So, no, so what was published in the website was the final draft, open for public comments, and I saw professional, you know, advice on how to deal with those comments. And because that is the final version that people commented on, the advice was to just collate the comments and add them as an appendix to that final draft and use it as is then. Because if we now go in and, you know, change the draft again, then we have to go through another round of commentary. So, you know, that's how Sarah says how plans are published.
It's intended to be an evergreen document that will keep getting.
So just to be fair, Pete, when the word draft is associated with anything, having my contract, when it's a draft, it's a draft. When it's final, it's final. So when I've seen draft next to everything, in all honesty, I've taken it as, I didn't realize it was final. So if we put the word final, and I get every document, it's a moving document, but it's still not, it's a draft, a draft means it's not fine, it's not done. And so whether we want to put a different word to it, but I'm sorry, that's my, that's my bad, that when I saw a draft, it's, I'm on contract, if I send it as a draft, it's a draft, don't sign it.
No, absolutely. And, you know, that final publication, together with all the comments and the questionnaire and the MAPC workshop, and all those outreach and comments that we've gotten, that when all that is collated and published, that would be the final version then. Because all the comments, you're part of that, you know?
And so my point is, that is not, we've already got out of this path already, so Hilly, that's not an approved plan. It has not been approved. It may be the final, it may be a good reference document, in the same way, this is.
Yeah.
This is an evergreen document, too. This is not an approved plan, it's just at a certain point in time, we do that. When we say that we, and so.
Yeah.
I think in these, in this case, there were two items, support the state 2030 climate goals, I'm saying, fine, this is not a marketing document for a climate plan, which is an evergreen document that's never actually been approved, that doesn't actually lay out the plan of what exactly we're going to do. It's a, it's a high-level document that talks about things. Whatever, if we ever, I don't even know it's important anymore that it have to be an approved plan because it's not concrete enough to actually drive action. It captures a sentiment, and I don't think that sentiment is going to be radically different in the near future. So it's okay, it's just that then you can't use that, in my words, from a couple of town meetings ago, you cannot use this as the blank check that you say people have signed. They did not sign this blank check. It's a philosophy document, it's fine. And we've had, we've had some discussions about some of the strategic aspects of that around that fourth pillar, around why are we planning to buy offsets? Why aren't we planning to be able to sell offsets? Takes 30 to 50 years to grow a forest. Seattle's doing it, so why don't we do it as well? So our plan in 2050 is to not have to buy offsets, but if people were buying them, we'll sell them to them. That's, it's those kinds, it's not like the whole thing is wrong, it's that, we're going to talk strategy, let's talk strategy, but let's make sure that part is taken seriously. We don't have to worry about it for 35 more years, but this is a strategic document, so let's get our act together on this stuff. That's, that was the only reason why we took the words out, but I don't think that was meant to imply that the climate action plan is an irrelevant document that we don't need to pay attention to, we don't need to follow. So I'm not that hung up about.
So I guess my reaction to that one specific thing would be that I would leave it in there, I would put it under the, maybe move it over to the 2023 goals there, but.
What would the 2023 goal be?
To work on the climate action through the TomCap.
And how would you know you did it? This is, I'm just, if that's a goal, how do you know you've accomplished that goal?
Well, you look back and you evaluate.
Against? I don't, let's, Pete says, put it into 2023. We have some issues, rather than try to resolve that right away.
Okay.
In the interest of the discussion, let's capture it there.
Okay.
And I still am not quite sure how that works practically, but I also am not trying to imply that we're going to ignore the goal, so work. And Pete, did you do track changes, or?
No, I just, I did, I didn't have that many changes, but I wrote them.
Okay.
Okay, I added in, for section two, we have private well compliance with drought restrictions imposed on town residents. That's a town meeting warrant article for 2023.
So.
So in section two, or secondly, section three, where it has private well compliance with drought restrictions imposed on town residents using town water, I just basically added for the 2022, 2023 goal, that's a town warrant article in annual town meeting.
Just move that over a column?
Yeah, I get it. Yep. That one goes over there. And again, general comment in this area, for sure, we're missing a lot of goals because we were working on the high-level stuff, so there's more to fill in. Hilly?
Yeah, so could I take a step back and sort of think about this as a town goal, where I agree with Eileen, we have a lot of groups inside the town government and outside that are working on this, and I think it would be great to give them a chance to fill out these things, you know?
Well, yeah.
I, as, TomCap, I, you know, Guss and I agree, there are two main pillars that are in the state climate plan that are not in our climate plan, partly because the Energy Committee does not cover them, partly because they're hard to tackle and have complex issues and are, we have other specialists for it. One being, you know, waste disposal, the trash, our trash. And I think, you know, if this is a sustainability goal, we should have a section on waste and maybe a goal of zero waste in here, you know? Go talk to TSCAR and Mo and say, you know, think about how, what are the steps that you would want to have, develop your own waste, zero waste plan, you know, for the next, whatever, 20 years. And the same, you know, CONCOM, obviously, you know, Gus would like to see, you know, carbon sequestration be part of the long-term goal of CONCOM, which, you know, is clearly something they would do and not the Energy Committee or you. And so they should be able to come here and say, you know, this is a worthwhile goal, we are between a rock and a hard place because at the same time, we have requirements or demand for recreational spaces, you know, we have the dogs that, you know, I've heard people say that they're diminishing the biodiversity and, you know, wildlife in the areas where they run free, just in case that committee wants to have another member talking about that, you know? But maybe they want to approach CONCOM about that, too, you know, because a lot of the spaces that dog owners utilize are under the purview of CONCOM. So my, and the same thing with the Planning Board, you have actually plans in town that have been vetted and have received plenty of input from residents that should feature in here and that should, you know, be, I mean, they are already town goals and, you know, like, the master of town, my master plan has specific sustainability goals, and they are approved by the Planning Board, and they have been, you know, intensely vetted by the town. And so my recommendation is to actually invite all these groups in and say, you know, what are additional things that need to be in here, first, in long-term goal and the sort of general, you know, 10-year process? And then you can, you can move over to 2023 and say, okay, what can we actually tackle here?
So when you say that, Christine, I kind of look to you and think, so a lot of, a lot of the, so if we talk about waste, I mean, so Mo reports in two and three, are there, have any of your direct reports said, you know what, we could actually add to this so we could validate some of the things that they're doing that would add to?
No, nobody's reviewing this yet, no.
Okay, so no one's really.
My staff has not reviewed this.
Okay.
In terms of department heads, obviously, administration has, but individual department heads have not reviewed it.
So there, so my thought about that, let me start with you on the, when you were talking about Sustainable Medfield. We have, we have a couple of examples of how we've done that here. The one that jumps out at me is things like the group home goal, where it's work with AHT to develop group home. Now, that wasn't us deciding to assign a group home to the Affordable Housing Trust.
They've already done it.
That was the Affordable Housing Trust looking to develop a group home, and we basically are saying, yeah, that's a worthwhile goal. So therefore, we did acknowledge that it was the Affordable Housing Trust that was doing the work, and we did capture it here as a goal. The, what I, to your point, Hilly, what I'm getting at is I don't think we want a group environmental confab of all the department heads saying, so what can we do to make all of this stuff better? I think that, you know, that you just brought up some good examples of sustainability and zero waste. I think those are worthwhile goals for the town to pursue. If we're going to pursue those, then it makes a heck of a lot of sense for TSCAR and certainly through the transfer station. That is, and this may require, once we can, if we can articulate what those goals should be, there will be a smart way to bring those departments in or those committees within departments in to figure out what is, if this is what we're trying to do, what do you think should be the goals? I think that would be a great add for this. But not as, kind of like, everybody's in a room so we can.
No, no, no.
The, one other thing, and this is, I'm not sure how to deal with this, you started out by talking about Sustainable Medfield, and I think they're doing great work. What I, what I'm wrestling with is, I wouldn't want the goals to turn into some sort of both town and private selected groups that get highlighted in the goals, but that doesn't mean that people that are not, or groups that are not in the town can't contribute to this stuff, so I.
Because they're all residents, so to me, it's like, they're all Medfield residents. There are people that are honing in on this more than I am, I'll say that, I was right there, and say, so if there's a knowledge base that we, as a town, have acknowledged that we want to achieve certain things, and we have a lot of volunteers that are educating themselves that in turn can educate us, and then we have the ability to say, what is achievable? And then there's always, and I know, you've helped me open my eyes to certain things that, we never want to commit, like, oh, no problem, because if there's a cost associated with, that's when we have to be conscious of the money that we're spending on behalf of our taxpayers. So it's balancing what we would like to do, the knowledge base of people that are honing in on a heck of a lot more than we are, to share what are their findings? So if we are behind the curve, let's say, on the 2030, where are we missing out compared to surrounding communities? Or where are we at par? Or what are we doing that's putting us ahead of other communities? There's learnings there that can help us as we look at our goals, like, so.
I agree with that, yep.
And so that's all I'm trying to get at, is when I was talking to Christine earlier today, and I was kind of re-looking at these goals, I thought, you know, we're kind of spoiled in the sense that almost every one of these goals, there are, in some way, shape or form, a subcommittee or a group of citizens in this town working on all these things, and, and we should certainly respect what they're doing and all the time and energy that they're volunteering to say, okay, you're working on these certain things, what are you seeing? It's important to the town. We channel all that information, and then we filter through, are there things that we're going to act upon that are at no cost? Are there things that we want to act upon, but we need to educate the citizens? Or there are things that we would love to be able to do, but it's too premature and we can't put it in because we can't afford it? That's all I'm getting at.
So the sensitivity I had when you first started, as you were talking, it started crystallized for me. If we have a town goal, and Sustainable Medfield is an organization outside of the town government that can support that, it makes sense for me, for us, to call out the town goal. My guess is, let me give you, I'll even give you an example. Say the energy, when we talk about energy independence, let's say the Energy Committee says, you know, the thing that we really need to push on this year is to make sure that more homeowners are taking a look, a good serious look at heat pumps. That's the thing, it's there, it makes eminent good sense, saves them money, good for the environment, and it's, and it'll pay for itself, but most people don't know it. Now, I can see that goal of making sure that the public, you know, the public is fully aware of heat pumps, or maybe there's a goal of, in the same way we did, solar panels, of establishing a program for heat pumps. That would come through working with the Energy Committee to develop and roll out the heat pump, you know, promotional plan, working with Sustainable Medfield.
Exactly.
I wouldn't want us to have a goal that says, oh, this is our town goal.
We're on the same page.
We'll let Sustainable Medfield do that.
No, 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 we're on the same page.
This is actually exactly how we work, you know? We find areas that we want to highlight, that we think are appropriate for that time. And Sustainable Medfield is an awesome resource where it's easy for us to sort of write up the information that citizens should know, and then just sort of promote that website and say, go and look at it, you know, and have a PR effort around it.
So we are on the same, and just to, because Megan's here, so this is actually good. I would be more sensitive about doing that with Medfield Environmental Action, because Medfield Environmental Action is a self-described lobbying, you know, advocacy group, and I'm not saying that because I don't like what Medfield Environmental Action is doing, it's that I would be more cautious about, because it compromise, it potentially compromises the town, and it compromises Medfield Environmental Action if there's a role. So just to differentiate Sustainable Medfield, which I perceive to be a very good educational resource, even if you don't talk to anybody, you just go on the website, you'll find great stuff. That is easy for me to see how that could be a sort of a politically neutral outside.
Right. But, you know, I mean, we do work with Medfield Environmental Action just because we have a bunch of volunteers that do, you know, work with Medfield TV, that help organize locations and just do things that the Energy Committee does not have the people power for, and I don't think we've ever done any lobbying, so.
You know, you have, and Megan, you know, when you first joined the Energy Committee, my question for you was, can you both do that and be on Medfield Environmental Action? And I was satisfied with the answer you gave me. That's great, that's why I'm not worried about it, but I'm saying if you set it up where suddenly town goals are being assigned to Medfield Environmental Action, that compromises both organizations.
No, no, no.
That's the situation I want to avoid.
No, that's not what I want.
I would just like to clarify one thing. Sustainable Medfield does not have as a goal to be a net zero by 2050. Do you know what I mean? It's not, that's not a goal of ours. Our goal is to bring groups together.
Yeah.
And share information and provide both, you know, so groups can collaborate, and then so we have a resource for individuals.
Okay.
And the way it works, too, is that the groups that participate in Sustainable Medfield, they're generating the actions, the individual resources for residents of the town, so.
So if there's a program that the town is trying to promote around things like heat pumps, I can easily see how Sustainable Medfield would probably be the best.
Exactly. We want to be a one-stop resource, so people aren't like, where should I turn?
Right.
You know, where to find this? You can go to Sustainable Medfield and get the resources. And that's why we, you know, really welcome participation of town groups like the Energy Committee, and we'd love to have, you know, more people, Planning Board, Health Department, TSCAR, you know, working with us.
I think we're in the same.
Yep, 100%.
So before you go, and could I just comment on that first climate action part before you move on down?
The one that we took it out of, the very.
Yeah, well, so, I mean, what I see here is you still have in support the state 2030 climate goal, right? I mean, I'm okay with that. Because that's a relatively short-term goal, it's measurable, and, you know, we can work up against this. So then you have ensure that Medfield is on track to pursue feasible 2050 net zero goals. I just want to point out, it's one net zero goal, that's the goal, there's not several goals. So what I suggest to put in there is ensure that Medfield is on track to pursue the net zero 2050 goal as approved by town meeting.
So I'm going to propose something different than that, which you and I discussed on the phone. You're using the goal as just the net zero by 2050, and I understand that, and that's fine. What I would say is ensure that Medfield is on track to pursue feasible strategies to achieve 2050 net zero goals. So the thing we're pursuing is, this is what we talked about on the phone, the issue I care about is what it is we're doing to get there, it's not just generic, you know, hit the goal, because it's like, well, that's, yeah, that's a goal, but there's not, there's no act, there's no link to action. So it's the strategies is the, the issue I had, when I, because I use the word feasible there, had to do with making sure that the things we're trying to do are things that are, look like they're going to work, rather than things that we're doing because, well, all the other towns are doing this, we better do this, too. That's the thing I'm trying to avoid doing.
But, you know, by the way, where you put the feasible strategies, it means you ensure that Medfield is on track to pursue feasible strategies, and I think you should say, ensure that Medfield is on track to pursue the net zero goal using feasible strategies.
That's fine, fine.
Because otherwise, it's, you're pursuing feasible strategies dramatically.
Can you say that one again?
This one? So it was, get rid of the feasible in the original.
Strategies before 250, okay.
And then, so it's ensure that Medfield is on a track to pursue 25th net zero goals using feasible strategies.
With the net zero 2050 goal, one goal. And that, you know, that is in line with what, you know, Tom.
So one goal is simply net zero.
It's the goal of reaching net zero emissions.
Interesting. Interesting. Uh, that's fine, I don't, using feasible strategies. And then, Hilly, I'll make this comment, because I, I do think we need goals put in here, but that suggests to me, there's two pieces of that. One is, if we, if we have identified strategies now that we're pursuing that are actionable, that we want to get something done in the next year, we should put that down, the column, in the, in the 2030 column, but we also probably need a tracking system.
Right. For example, I mean, you can go into Tom Cap, there are 2030 goals, especially in the renewables and in the building sector, where.
I'm sorry, 2023 goal, I'm, I'm talking about this year.
Oh, 2023, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that is probably something, you know, maybe the Energy Committee can come up with some goals that we definitely want to pursue.
So, one of my suggestions on this page was to move the, the hiring the Sustainability Director, I would keep that in, and I would move it over to the 2023 goals, and I think that corresponds with what Christine has said she wants to do this next year.
So, I, you know, I took your comment saying, I think it's semantic saying this is, is a, is a action rather than a goal, so I propose maybe to write, create internal capacities to support town boards, departments, committees, and residents to work towards, towards the town's climate goals, coordinate projects and develop and, right, develop projects, coordinate and develop projects and write grants.
Can you send, can you send that to me?
Yeah.
I'll see if you got those, I'm very impressed.
Yeah, I got, I got enough.
I'm trying to type them together.
I would just, I get the first words.
The idea that, you know, you create the internal capacity to work between departments and committees.
Right. Now, for 2023, the only, the only issue I have around, the first issue I had around identifying, hiring a Sustainability Director to support the development as a goal, was that it wasn't a goal, and we, you're fixed that. The only other reservation I have about the 2023 goal of hiring is, this is like we're making a hiring decision in this plan.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
And I'm not comfortable with that.
I agree with that.
But it's not because I disagree entirely with what you just said, it's, hiring a Sustainability Director might be the action that we take to achieve something. I would like to, I would like this column to talk about what it is we're trying to achieve, where the hire, and what I'm getting at is, well, hiring a Sustainability Director might be the answer, but two years ago, it was contracting with Susan McPhee to at least begin to get to that answer, so I'm, I'm reluctant to.
You trying to dedicate a body or dedicate part of a body?
Well, I, I'm trying to say, what is it that we want that body to do? And that's a capability, I'm agreeing with the fact that we want to bring the staff, we want some sort of staff capability to do something. That something, you know, for me, one possibility of something is, oh, we're going to hire a grant writer.
Mm-hmm.
Another possibility is, no, we're going to hire a technical person to work with the Facilities Department to help us make smarter decisions about what we should be doing inside the town that's prudent, that's effective, and that's cost-effective. And so, the piece that I'm, just saying, well, we're going to hire a Sustainability Director, doesn't tell me what we're doing, it's, what is it we have in mind for that, that we're trying to achieve for that? Am I making, see what I'm getting at?
Absolutely, and, you know, could I refer to, to the first draft that I submitted to you in October?
Mm-hmm.
There's a long list of, of activities that that position would carry out, and that I had actually gleaned from the job description of other Sustainability Directors, so that, you know, going back to that, was a long list of activities that that person could perform for the town.
So, Christine, can I, do you have a copy of that? What I'm getting at is.
I do, but, and I, you're all stealing my 2024 budget presentation tonight.
Okay.
I am envisioning, and I have included it in my budget for 2024, that I was going to discuss tonight, which we may or may not get to. I am not envisioning a Sustainability Director. I need a person in the Facilities Department, and we don't need to go into details about the vulnerabilities we've experienced this year in the Facilities Department. Having one person departments is no longer an option for us, we've seen that this year. I envision this person to be a, and I don't, I'm still working on the structure and the title with the School Department, obviously, so I don't know if it's an Assistant Facilities Director, if it's a Project Manager slash Energy Manager, but it's becoming more and more clear to me that while I recognize that the Energy Committee would like a Sustainability Director, I think we need to take a step back on that, and we actually really need more of an Energy Manager at this point. And when I attended the last Energy Committee meeting, that was clear to me, as we were talking about, who is doing the set points for what our heating should be? Who is managing our energy usage? And, you know, that's not in our wheelhouse to do, it was not Nick's wheelhouse to do, and we made, I made him do that. We need somebody who has the expertise to be reviewing the energy contracts for us. So, I think while the goal would be eventually to have them take on a lot more of the sustainability, I think we get there if we have more of an Energy Manager, Project Manager, that can identify the projects and do some of the other things. So, I'm kind of trying to take some of those tasks, but some of the tasks that I think I need and that our Facilities Department needs, and that's the job I'm trying to create, but I have included it in the fiscal year 24 budget.
Now, having said all that, would it be fair for me to say, that does not preclude the idea that in fiscal '23 or '24, we would want to continue to have the kind of help that we've gotten from Susan McPhee?
I have left Susan's contract within the budget, because I think she's been invaluable with the green communities part of it, and the grant writing part of it. So, I have left there, that as well, so I do have both positions in there.
And, and we've worked terrifically with her, you know, and especially now, as you're saying, with the issues of sometimes we don't know who to contact, it, it helps to have somebody to talk to, yeah.
So, anyway, if I say grant writing on this side, energy management, and for me, in the middle somewhere, is somebody inside the town that actually has the, the sort of smarts to advise the town wisely on which of these things we should be doing now, and which things, as much as everybody wants to do them, not the right time, having that reliable, I actually think Susan maybe has helped us a little bit on some of those things.
Oh, absolutely.
When it comes to energy, but that, it's, for me, it's actually something in the middle there that says, let's get somebody that we can, who's, who's technical insight we can rely on, so that we're doing the smart things when we should be doing them, and we're not just doing something because a bunch of other towns are doing it, or somebody wrote an article, or.
And I think more importantly, to recognize that when we only have one person who's, who has the capacity to manage those projects, we know we're still catching up with a lot of those projects, and we can't think about the, the things we want to do extra to those. If I don't get those existing projects off the radar, we're never going to move forward, we're, we, you know, we're continually stuck in this pattern. So, I think having an additional person to be a Project Manager will get that moving forward, and we'll see the energy results from that, just getting more projects done.
Right, and I think it will benefit the whole infrastructure of the town, you know, to bring in, you know, complete those projects, develop the projects, and then bring them forward towards, you know, financing options, now that so much money is on the table for us.
Good, all right.
So, Chris, I'll just bring up one of the things that, when Jerry McCarty was leaving, I asked him, what, what Medfield could do better in the future, because that's always what I'm trying to figure out. And, and the one thing that he mentioned was, if there could be, he, he spent a lot of time going around and looking at things in the schools, and he said, if there could be a, like a custodial supervisor who is, does that instead of him, and I know, I think I brought that up before, and I don't, there's some problem with the schools doing it for some reason, but.
I would leave that to this, I don't manage the custodial at the school, so I would, I would leave that recommendation, but I will let Jeff know that that's still on your radar.
Yeah, if you could talk to Jeff about it, and let him know that, that Jerry McCarty thought that was a good idea for them.
So, I could tell this is going to take a few more rounds before, I mean, we're making progress.
Yeah.
And if anything, I think a lot of this, we've made, you didn't have a lot of comments on the first five, so at least, and, and the sixth one was a new one, so this is actually time well spent, and we're moving a little bit over into that right-hand column, which I think is a good place. I, I still think there are a lot of holes to be filled in there, but are we sort of, or Pete, did you have more?
I, I didn't everything more on number six, I did have some other things on some, on some of the other ones.
You're all set, okay, so what else did you have?
So, my first thing, I think, has been solved, because I, you know, again, we talked about this before, but these are labeled town goals, I regarded them as select board goals, but if we're going to actually bring in different committees and, and boards in town to talk to us about these goals, then that solves that issue for me.
Good.
And, and I see it more as becoming a, a town goal. I, you know, I, under your, the two and a half buffer that you added, Gus.
Mm-hmm.
I, I think that's a fine goal, I think that's, that's going to inflict pain, and, and I don't know how we're going to, I just, I put a question mark next to that.
That's, that's totally legitimate, I, I agree with you.
So, I just, it's just a comment, I'll just keep going, because there's no solution to that, I mean, our taxes are too high, and yet we, we're trying to deliver services to the people in town, so.
So, well, just before we get off of that, I am happy, instead of the verb set, to replace it with explore. I, I have, I have the sensitivity that you have, the only reason why I'm sort of ready to kind of bite down on that stick, is although it will be painful to do this now, at some point in the next five years, there will be a significant school project, and then that pain will land, it will be partly offset by the, by the debt that we retire between now and then, so that's, that's good news.
Yeah. Not offset enough.
Well, I know, and so what I'm getting at is, when we get to that school, if I knew for sure the school was going to be cheap, I wouldn't worry about it, but after our last experience, and after you add in several years of development, and inflation, and construction cost growth, that's going to be bad news, offset by, I think we're building a smaller school, but I don't know how to handicap those two things. I'm still saying, somewhere in five years, we're going to be looking at a school, the purchase price of which is probably at least in the ballpark of the price that we were dealing with last fall. So, that's going to hit, if that big A cost does hit, and if that does represent an $900, $950 increase in taxes, there'll be pain there. If you could sit there and say, but we found a way, we have deliberately avoided $300 worth of taxes for you going into it, so that $900 is really $600 because of what we did to create the buffer. That's the thought process.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to try, and, and it's obviously up to the residents at the town meeting as to what budgets they're going to, going to want to adopt.
So, to your point, though, I'm happy to replace that with explore, as opposed to set.
Sure, sure, I just, you know, I'm just raising it, because it's, it's a pain point for, for the town.
I threw it out as an idea, and I recognize the three of us need to have some discussions about whether this is just me having a stupid idea that sounds nice, but will whatever happen, or whether that pain you're talking about is better if it's, if it's spread a bit in one way, in order to reduce what it turns into for the taxpayers when the time comes for that school.
And then, the issue of the downtown, I mean, you've crossed out the idea of the, of some committee studying the downtown, and to me.
I think, I think I did that, because I thought we, I guess we haven't formed it yet.
Right, so we didn't cross it, you're establishing, we're kind of renaming it, because.
Well, no, no, I, what I did in my head was, I said, oh, we, we've already decided we're going to have that committee, and I didn't put it here. We're going to, we're going to have one committee, as opposed to the two that we had.
Yeah, that makes sense, absolutely.
And, yeah, I think you're right, no, Pete, I think you're right, so, put, put, put the single committee back in. When I took it out, it was because we've already had a discussion that said we wanted to do it, and I said, okay, that's done, but it's not done, so, let's put that back in, Pete. I didn't, I didn't mean to say we weren't going to try to have that committee.
And then, under pursue community housing goals, all three, I just, in the second to last row, I, I thought maybe we should explore greater access to allowance of accessory dwelling units, and if you want an area where you could actually get more tax revenue for the town, that would be one of those areas, because if you, if you allow accessory dwelling units, you're not likely to get a lot of schoolchildren living in them, because they're very small units, and so that you're going to add to your tax base.
But is that in the RU, is that where you're focusing that?
No.
That's, that can be anywhere in town.
Well, that's to be determined, I mean, you know, to me, it makes a lot more sense on an acre lot than on a, on an 800, 8,000 square foot lot.
Okay, that's.
But if the people on the 8,000 square foot lot in the RU want it, then, you know, you'd have to listen to what people want, certainly.
Is that?
It's an income, it's a, it's a, a, a way of creating value for the people that have the ability to add an accessory dwelling unit, too, so, you know, you might want to see about who wants to have that increase in value in their lives.
Yeah, but I think it goes back to the conversation, I think it's, it's important that, in those smaller lots, when you start cramming things in there, it's kind of ironic, because then we had 25 acres, and we're like, oh, no, let's not crowd 25 acres, but let's crowd 14,000 square feet. So, I think that there's a, there's definitely a healthy conversation, says, when we start going down this path, let's.
Oh, it's a big conversation, because it changes, you know, Gus talks about the character of the town, this would change the character of the town.
Oh, it.
Because you're adding a lot of housing units, small ones.
On small lots.
Well, so, let's leave it at the explore part.
Yeah.
I was thinking, this was like in-law apartment, opera apartment, so integral, so you're not, you're not going to sell two condos for every house that used to be there, it's an accessory dwelling unit, which would add value, because you have this sort of apartment that's appended to the, the house.
Well, you know, a building lot in Medfield is worth hundreds of thousands of dollars, so if, if by zoning we create a building unit for, for a lot of people, that creates a lot of value in town.
Yes, but that, but, no, but it cuts the value.
Well, it, it depends on where, in the RU, which is why I asked a very specific question, in the RU, you have a lot of restrictions, where today, you, I live in the RU, so you can't build within 12 feet off your property line, and there's, there's a lot of limitations, so you take a small lot and you make it smaller. And if, what we're saying is, but we, we potentially would explore pushing that out, we just, back in 2017, passed nine new zoning bylaws to make sure that they, RU didn't get overbuilt.
Right, right.
So, and that went, that went unanimous, so, that's why I asked specifically, when you make that statement, I just want to make sure we're talking about where we're looking to do that. If it's up on Indian Hills, and he wants to do it, and there's plenty of room, that's fantastic.
You, you do it where the residents want it, I think is, is the quick answer, and that has to be determined, you have to talk to your residents and figure that out.
That's all I'm saying, it's 2017, it was unanimous, nine zoning.
You have an issue of where, I have an issue of what.
Okay.
Because what I'm saying is, not two separate buildings that can be separately sold, because then what you're saying is, let's take half-acre zoning.
Absolutely.
And cut it to quarter-acre zoning.
No, that's not.
Or one-acre zoning, and cut it to half-acre zoning, and you will do to a single house on a housing unit, what a two-family house became when you could turn them into condos.
Bingo, yeah, that's, that's.
So, if, I mean, this is all part of the exploration, so I'm, I'm reacting to it, but I think exploring that is good. The view I had of it was that an accessory dwelling unit was some, an apartment that could be built into a house, if you ever sold it, the whole thing would be sold as a single unit, but if somebody has elderly parents.
Yes.
It suddenly opens up some possibilities, you know, the, there's a lot of, for me, it's almost more quality of life and options for people to take care of things that would otherwise, you know, be a burden, certainly on maybe someplace somewhere, but more importantly, it wouldn't be as nice a place, nicer way to live, as we could make it if people could do that kind of stuff, so.
And the good news is that I, I talked to Sarah Rapoza, and, and the Planning Board is, is expecting to look into this, that's sort of the next thing on their agenda after they redo the zoning at the annual town meeting. Then my, my last suggestion.
Pete, let me just finish, I'm going to put down in the, actually, I'm going to put this in the second column, and I have to come up with something in the first column, explore innovative housing concepts, is in the long-range goal.
Okay.
Concepts, and it's probably to improve something, and then, the action for next the action for next year is to explore the feasibility of accessory.
Accessory dwelling.
It is accessory dwelling, yeah. Just the feasibility.
Apparently they're very, very widespread in California.
That doesn't necessarily.
Their real estate tax laws are really crazy, so. No, we don't wanna go there.
The, the last change or suggestion I had was that our goal five, I think, needs a caption.
Hold on a minute, let me just finish this thing here. I just, if I write it down, I'll be able to get it right versus being creative. Okay. Goal five.
And, and I was gonna suggest maintain town character, but, you know, whatever. I just thought that.
No, 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 no. Goal five is associated with promote the healthy and responsible. No, it isn't. Or is it?
I don't think so.
It's no field unique town because of. It's on page six of nine, if that means anything to you.
No, well, there's a couple that, there's one that has two goals, but no, that's fine. I, yeah, you said maintain town character. Yeah, I think.
Well, it's the one that jumped out at me, but, you know, I just think.
No, I think you're, again, I think you're right. I, I.
Title there. And that's the end of my input.
Okay, I, I'll, so that will be. Uh, wait a minute.
I apologize that I didn't do it on track changes. I usually work on the computer.
So that's fine. That's a new title. All right. I have more. If, again, if you, your permission, I will once again.
Five wasn't highlighted. It's if you, you could scroll right through it real quick if you didn't see it there, but that, maybe that's why you're not. See, everything else is highlighted, like that's promote healthy. And five just goes right into goal five. And then it starts preserve protect.
But it, but it's, it's missing the title.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go back. I, that's fine. I got it. So I, I will do another iteration. This isn't the final iteration, but I'll do that. But we're good?
All the way up to the election.
Yeah, yeah. It might take, it might take longer. All right. We're good, we're good. We've beaten on that one enough for today?
We have.
All right. Uh, next item is the discussion of the Tomcak Plan and Elect, Electric School Bus Grant. I feel like I've already had this conversation. Hilly and I were on for about two hours.
They had a meeting inside there going to talk about it.
Oh, okay. I didn't expect this. Okay.
Uh, no.
I, I'm open to your questions, I think.
Okay. Uh, so I'm, you want me to start because I put this on the.
Well, cause I thought we were, it was getting bumped, so I didn't even, okay, so my bad. I, I thought, when I, last I spoke, you were chatting with Hilly. I thought it was getting bumped off.
So, so my questions have largely been answered in the, I think, two-hour call that Hilly and I had this afternoon, maybe, maybe closer to three. The reason I originally put it on was because of the issues around the Tomcap. How does it get approved? We've had that discussion. I don't need to re-raise it. I'm satisfied. I know where it stands, that we know, and I think you and I have a closer understanding of the gap I'm trying to fill. So we're good on that. It would be helpful if you could take three minutes to talk about the, the school bus issue as it stands, as your understanding of that initiative here in town. Not, doesn't need to be a full thing, but I learned a lot from talking with you. I realize probably Mike LaFrancesca would have been the better choice to talk about what the schools are doing, but if you can just give people the highlights of where that stands and.
Sure. So, so the energy committee thinks that fleet electrification is a really worthwhile goal and residents asking for it. There's a lot of money available and, and so I, you know, went and offered our support to Michael LaFrancesca to see, you know, where, how the energy committee can support them. And I was also, at the same time, talking to other volunteers and, and staff members in other towns and it turns out that all the towns have the same issue in, in procurement in that, you know, the model right now is every three years you go bid for, for bus contract, you know, for, for towns like Medfield that own their bus, don't own their buses, and you get one reply and that's your bus contractor and you go with them and, you know, you have a three-year contract. And as it turns out, that model is not easily transferred to adopting electric school buses. There's a whole host of issues that need to be solved and.
Could I interrupt one point about that model? Every three years, the bus contractor buys an entire new fleet of buses.
Oh, wow.
So think about that. Nobody's volunteering, nobody's donating money to the town. So when we talk about expensive bus contracts, when you realize that every year the contractor buys a new set of buses, which obviously the price of that is embedded in the contract, then I, was you talked about, then sells three-year-old buses to somebody else's used buses.
That's part of their business model.
Part of our problem.
Well, plus we get one bid, so.
Yeah, yeah, you only get one bid, so there's no price, there's no, no price competition.
So, so that model is actually, you know, that issue that you, we face is very common across Massachusetts and has, has been recognized as an issue across many school districts, has been recognized by the legislature. There has been a report about this a couple of years ago. And there is even some legislative efforts to address that situation. Part of it is also, you know, because it's a sort of capital in, in center, in intensive enterprise, you know, you don't drive buses, you know, fifty miles to be with somebody else. So that sort of regionalization is, is part, partly how this developed and how it stays established. So a bunch of towns around here recognize that we're all in the same, the same issue that we would like to electrify, but we have not only that one contractor issue, but also, you know, issues about not wanting to own the buses if we get a contract, trying to figure out how the charging would work, training for the, for the, the drivers, you know, the, the maintenance, the, I mean, there's a whole row, host of issues that, that, just because the model is different, it doesn't fit neatly in the current model and that needs a bunch of adjustments. So a bunch of activists, volunteers, members of staff from surrounding towns, we got together and said, what can we do? We interviewed Highland, that is a, a company that specializes in offering turnkey solutions for fleet electrification for school districts. But that involves the schools then owning the buses. And sort of we, they had a presentation, they highlighted what the issues were that we would have to address. And then one of us found an opportunity to apply for a technical assistance grant where we developed a model where we would, as, as a group of towns would act as a pilot, sort of as, as a study where, where MAPC could come in and advise us on strategies that towns could use, we could use, or other towns could use to, to affect fleet electrification. And, and it's really an exploration of, of that model. And we proposed that to the business directors of several towns and they just took it and ran. So we're kind of out of the loop now. It's, it's, you know, a dozen towns or more that are now part, partnering on that technical assistance grant application, which I think is exciting for me as a volunteer to sort of create a project, then hand it over and have it, have it flower is just awesome. And I don't know what's gonna come out of this. We had a lengthy, we invited MAPC to, to this group and we had a lengthy discussion with four of their departments that recognized the issue, recognized the, the ubiquity of this issue and how, how it really is an obstacle to fleet electrification. And I think we are in really good position for them to, to support this because they recognize that this would be an awesome pilot study to effect and, and maybe transfer across the state. So that's where this stands. And, and at this point, you know, as I said, I'm out of the loop, but this is, I'm very happy about.
Is Medfield in the loop?
Sorry?
Is Medfield in that loop?
Absolutely. So, so the, the grant application is due this Friday and Needham stepped up to be the lead community and all the other communities submitted letters of support from the business directors or superintendents.
If I could just comment based on the length, much lengthier conversation that Hilly and I had this afternoon, and if I get this, any of this wrong, correct me, Hilly. Looking at what Hilly described and what this group is trying to do, first off, I think it is, it is a good study. It'll be good to hear what they come up with. Looking at it as a selectman in terms of the things that concern me is, to her point, the, the current model for bus transportation doesn't let, doesn't adapt itself easily to a model for a bus fleet that's an electrified bus fleet that requires its own charging infrastructure and because buses are unique, it's actually a more robust charging infrastructure than just your standard Tesla. When I look at this, and I think the same issue, I had the same issue with the, the webinar that I saw at the state, is the question of who is in the bus business? So right now, when I was growing up, towns owned their own buses, they ran their own buses, they had their own bus drivers, and then towns discovered that doesn't make sense. We should privatize that and they moved it out to bus companies and now bus companies have towns in Massachusetts kind of, you know, by, by a rope because only one company responds to each solicitation. This, I think, could lead to some concept that would require towns to put the infrastructure in place and to provide the land for the buses and possibly buy the buses themselves, which in this case of this, not, no?
No, I, I mean, if, if we have no interest in owning the buses, so, so my understanding is that the town would, you know, the school department would apply for grants to get a rebate on a bus and they cover actually large, large parts of the buses. And then the, the, the ownership would actually be transferred to the contractor. I don't know exactly how that works, but I've been assured that this is how it works.
Infrastructure would be put in at the town, at town? It might be, it might be grants to pay for it, but it.
You know, I don't wanna say yes or no. I mean, it kind of makes sense to have the infrastructure because we're, we're already having the buses parked locally, you know? And with, so in Medfield, the typical bus run is less than twenty-five mile, miles. So, you know, you would have to charge the buses like every two days or so. You know, right now they get, they get driven down to Walpole once a week and, and filled with diesel. So, you know, it would make sense to have them locally and have them, you know, quickly charged. I also wanna point out, we're not talking about twenty buses, you know, we're talking about sort of a gradual, you know, one or two buses here and there, you know, at, at the transition.
Incrementally adding electric buses over time, is what you're saying?
Because I don't think we, I mean, I don't know that we turn over the whole fleet at once, you know, and I don't know that that is what we're looking for. I, I don't wanna speak for the school department, quite honestly, you know, I don't know what they put in their grants. But it does make sense to have some sort of charging infrastructure that is not too far away so that you can quickly top up between runs if you have to.
So, so maybe the way Mayor could rephrase this, because this is all an undefined, but being studied, which makes sense. The issues that sort of resonated with me as Hilly was describing this was a, who's in what business? So if the bus company is still running the buses, but the town is applying for the rebate that gets handed over to the bus company, you can start to see a much different contractual relationship between the town who's getting the money for the bus company buying the buses and the town or perhaps someone else putting in the charging station on town land to support the buses. And what's the dynamics in terms of a town's ability to continue to be able to choose the bus company that they want? And why does the bus company wanna even sign up for this? And maybe the answer is this is a cheaper way to get bus transportation because you're getting rebates that you pass the bus company. The bus company is getting buses and the buses don't require so much maintenance because they're electric. So I, I'm not even automatically saying this is bad news. I'm just saying there's a whole lot of questions with this. At this stage, this study should be testing out some of the practical feasibility and we just need to be mindful of what, what businesses the town is getting in and what businesses the town is staying out of and does that collection all make sense for us to be able to have viable contracts going forward?
Well, I, you know, I, if, if you have those questions, I think, not, not me, but.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Yeah. Thanks, thanks, Holly.
All right.
Okay. I think, any other questions, comments? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
That was a lot faster than the conversation that Hilly and I had on this one. Next, FY twenty twenty-four budget outlook, revenue projections.
So I just wanted to go over, I just have a general overview of our twenty-four municipal budget. We had our first warrant committee of the new year last night. And we're currently working on our overall budget worksheet, but there's still many unknowns, which is typical for this time of year. We're currently waiting for our state aid numbers. We anticipate this is going to be a bit later than we're accustomed to due to the change in the governor's office. Usually Governor Baker would come to the MMA annual meeting and let us know what we could anticipate in his budget for state aid. I don't think we're gonna get that next week. So we're still waiting for that. Obviously, we're being conservative. We have been talking with our health insurance company, property liability, and our fixed costs are seeing an increase over the past two years and part of that is due to post-COVID and we have had some experience with property loss both at the FAF Center roof and at the high school roof last year. Our utility cost projections, which I alluded to earlier, also requiring us to examine what our lives would have been like if Frank and I decided to be future traders. So we spent a lot of time looking at energy markets this week. So that's also an unknown and Michael LaFrancesca has been working with us on that. Obviously, the town and schools have energy contracts together for efficiency and cost savings. We still don't know the police union contract. The collective bargaining committee is still meeting. We actually have a meeting next week. That contract expired on June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two, so that's still an unknown as we go into fiscal year twenty-four, which would be the second year of that contract. Also, the class and compensation classification study that we received the grant for is going slower than we anticipated due to some of our staff turnover. So that will not be completed in time for the twenty twenty-three town meeting and I anticipate rolling that out at the twenty twenty-four town meeting. As is our usual practice in developing, developing the budget for local receipts and revenue projections, we have a much clearer picture at this time than we did last year on our post-COVID economic recovery, but we're still trying to be very conservative in how we're estimating. We can't encourage people enough to eat and buy local, which based on our meals projection, our meals tax you've been doing, so keep it up. It's good work.
Glad to help.
I can highlight some of the changes. We've been meeting with our department head since November, so the town side of the budget is probably ninety-eight cent, ninety-eight percent complete in terms of the town departments. We're still working on the revenue projections and local receipts, but I can give you some highlights on what I've incorporated and thank you, Kathy, for staying. One of the things Kathy and I have been working on, and I know I've mentioned to it several times, is forming a human services division. And the mission of that human services department will be to improve the efficiency, effectiveness and coordination of programs dedicated to health, welfare and quality of life for all Medfield residents. And at this time, we are including outreach, council on aging, the public health nurse and the veteran services officers, and those would fall under that umbrella together. And our main goal of that is not to increase anybody's budget. We believe we can, we can function and create this department without an increase to any of the budgets as they stand now. And our main objective of that is to foster a collaborative partnership with those. And honestly, since Kathy and I have been having these conversations for the past few months, she's already essentially doing this work. We have new department heads in some of these departments and Kathy's already been giving guidance and providing what I think is a better service to many of our residents who have reached out to you directly in absence of some of those departments, including veteran services. So I thank Kathy for already stepping up and doing something that we're, we're trying to get in place. I'm also recommending a move from a part-time conservation agent to a full-time agent and there are two reasons for that. One, the most basic is that we have not been able to fill the part-time position. And we have watched surrounding towns and other towns throughout the Commonwealth are able to fill their full-time agent position rather easily where we have not been able to fill the part-time. I think a full-time agent will also help us accomplish part of our goals that you talked about tonight in terms of managing our open space. Right now, the halftime agent helps the conservation commission. They do their meetings, they do the wetlands flagging, but we've never left any room within that position to actually manage the open space. So it's of no fault of the conservation commission or the agents we've had in the misman, I shouldn't say mismanage it, non-management. We just don't have the, the bandwidth and the capacity. And in seeing the stress that it's put on our conservation commission members of having a part-time agent and how much work they do as volunteers has really made me committed to, to doing a full-time agent to take some of that off their plate. It's just not fair as a, as a volunteer to be doing some of that administrative work. I already talked to you about my plan for the facilities department and what we'd like to do in adding a position in there. So at this time, we're anticipating having a budget worksheet to you with some preliminary numbers at your next meeting. The school committee will submit their budget to the Board of Selectmen by January thirty-first and I believe Dr. Margdin presents it at the school committee the following week. We anticipate Governor Healy's budget in early March. The revenue consensus hearing is in a couple of weeks. And then the warrant hearing is scheduled for March twentieth. So it's a, it's a very condensed timeframe this year in terms of getting the budget ready. So we are having weekly meetings with the warrant committee every Tuesday morning in anticipation of trying to move that process along even quicker. So.
Chris, do we have any federal money left over from the COVID, the ARPA stuff, or is that all pretty much accounted for at this point?
No, that was the presentation I made on, on the twentieth and there's actually a recommendation. We had talked on the twentieth when I presented the proposed spending plan. If you had approved everything at that meeting, which we're asking you to, to do tonight, that leaves eight hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars within our county
Okay.
allocation of money. Yep.
No more questions? No more questions?
Nope.
Okay. Thanks, Chris. Next vote to have the chair sign a letter of support for the cultural alliance of Medfield's application for MAPC's technical assistance program for feasibility study on the Phase Two for new construction for a visual and culinary arts building.
No, I read it.
I think Jean is on.
I think Jean is here. Yeah, I want to promote her.
Is this a different building than the two buildings they're already working with?
Great question for Jean. I think so, but I'm not sure.
Hi, Jean.
Hey, everybody.
Hey, Jean. Before you go down, the first question was, is this a, is this a new building or is it one of the two buildings?
No, it's a new building, separate project.
I think we all are in the dark about what it is.
I'm sorry?
I think we're all, I think, I think we're all in the dark about what, what it is then. We know about the two buildings, but not about an additional building.
So that, by the two buildings, you mean the former art center and the chapel and the-
Infirmary. Yep, yep.
So this is a potential, in our conversations, excuse me, with Trinity, to have a additional, to be able to build new somewhere else on that property that will be transferred to them. So we, we had been talking to Trinity or had already done a feasibility study for visual and culinary arts within the campus, reusing additional buildings beyond the two. Trinity said no to that because they want to do a fully, they want all the buildings for the residential, their residential project. What they said was, you could consider another space within their property to build out that additional program space. But because it would be a new building, we'd need to do a feasibility study to understand what we could accommodate within the available space.
So, and you would still be within the zoning for the site?
Yes.
How, how?
Because we didn't, we didn't zone it for 100% residential.
No, no, but we, but it's, the buildings or the zones have footprints for each of the buildings. There's no, there's no provision for new buildings.
Then we'd have to have another conversation about that.
Well, Bill's here, Bill's here, and he may, he may have something to say that's in your-
I'm not sure. I'd have to look at this.
There are some buildings coming down.
Doesn't say anything. Governor, the zoning is, is usage, not, not structure, basically. Article 20 is, is uses. I could be overridden by planning. My question more of a beware physically or thinking, that's all.
So, could you hear, I don't know if you heard Bill. Bill thinks that there is possibilities for a new building. I, I had the impression that the zoning we passed restricted it to the buildings that were there, but maybe, I know there's provisions for connecting buildings, but not for creating new buildings. But, but, yeah, so, so maybe you're right, maybe you're not. I, I, that was news to me. His question was, where are you talking about doing that?
We're looking in the front of the property along Hospital Road, like where the trailer is now.
Yeah. Well, so there, I think there's one question around zoning for me, because I didn't believe that that was, I, I, I'm just not sure if it's a loud one.
It's a west loop, basically, the front of the west loop.
Yeah. Where the security trailer is.
Yeah.
It's in the PDA, I mean, that's just, you know, that's part of what you're transferring.
Yep.
I guess I'm going to need to understand better what, like I said, I thought we had this all covered. I thought, this is one thing I understood about the zoning that was passed, is that it was restricted to the footprints of the buildings that were there, that were the contributing buildings. So, also, right now, you're saying maybe not, so, all right. There's a question there, and I don't have the answer to it.
Yeah, I wouldn't know the answer off the top of my head.
It's not a judgment out of the living, the process, it's just that-
Okay. Any questions, Eileen?
So, so I was confused. I thought this was actually, this had to do with the current buildings that were there? So, Jean, just simply put, what do you, what is this letter actually striving for? Is the ability to do feasibility?
We just want to apply for a grant to get some funding to help us with this feasibility study, to decide if this is a project we would want to pursue.
And do you have an intent for this building?
What do you mean an intent?
Like, well, so I'll go back to conversations that you and I had early on. I know at one point, if, if Trinity was willing, you were going to try to do like a farmer's market, farmer's restaurant off the backside. Would the intent potentially be to have something like that as you pulled in?
Right. This would be for the culinary and the visual arts, which is the other pieces of the programming that we wanted to bring to the campus, that we can no longer do in the existing buildings.
Okay.
So, right, it's, it's visual arts studio space, it's shared commercial kitchens to incubate small businesses, it's potentially the restaurant or beer garden of some sort. It's the farm table idea plus similar spaces for the visual artists, a gallery or an event space, classroom space, program space, and studio space.
So, so Jean, this is Bill. Hi. So, so you would-
Essentially be leasing that property from Trinity or buying the property from Trinity?
I'm not sure, Bill.
Okay, but it's, but that's, I mean, but it gets, since it's not town-owned, I mean, that, that particular piece of the parcel.
Correct. It would be a relationship with Trinity, yes.
All right. Now, I, I was just kind of offline, talking to Gus here and everything else, and, and I know, I don't claim to be an expert on the zoning or anything else, but my reading of the zoning doesn't necessarily limit anything about structures. What you have is a planning board that you have to take plans to. You probably have a concern somewhere about matching the design of the old buildings to not affect the historic tax credits, but-
Right.
The uses are there. Now, I don't, you know, off the top of my head, I don't remember whether the west slope, at least that portion of it, was zoned for, you know, a culinary or, I mean, I know at one time a hotel was there, and there were a couple of other things that were scheduled there and I think, so, I mean, I can't address that, but I believe that the zoning does not restrict any construction or new construction. It just sets out what, what it has to conform to, and what the uses and the shape or design of the buildings has to conform to. That's my understanding or my, my remembrance of, of what I saw.
Okay. Well, so there's an open question around what's there. Incidentally, Jean, the, the development, State Hospital Development Committee has a meeting tomorrow night, and I'm, I think I'm going to be talking to Todd tomorrow afternoon. So if, it might make sense for you to, if you have the time to join that meeting.
I'll be there.
Okay, good. Because I'm, right now, I, I thought I understood some things that I am no longer confident I understand around the zoning, and I would definitely defer it to Todd and the Development Committee around what is and isn't possible with the land that Trinity is, is getting. Pete, did you have questions or comments?
Well, yeah, I guess comments. So I'll start with the, I've been pushing Jean to do culinary work up there all along. I kept trying to get her to take the old dining room.
Commissary.
Because there was a, a, a commercial kitchen there. I guess Trinity doesn't, Trinity wants to make that building disappear, apparently. I think it can be made to look decent, but, you know, that's not my decision. So I, I, I kind of like the idea of a culinary arts center of some sort or other. So I guess I would be supportive of your, of your looking into it, which is what you're asking us to support you doing. So I don't know what, you know, whether I would support it in the end, but I certainly support you looking into it.
And Jean, you only, again, because I don't, I didn't have much background on the son of the letter that showed up for the support, that the first reaction I had, because this is a transaction that you are carrying out with Trinity, is that the town should have no role in that whatsoever, because it's between you and Trinity. It's not, I don't know why the town would be involved in that whole thing. If there's, if there is a good reason why the town needs to be involved because of the nature of the grant and how, like, I, I don't think the town should be opining about enthusiasm for this thing that you're working out with Trinity at all. And that's a legal, it's just an uncomfortable legal exposure to this, in my speculative mind, maybe, that we're kind of sticking our nose into something that we really should have nothing to do with. If the grant itself is something that requires the town that the project is located in to express its support, then I think the request should be coming from Trinity, which is the company we're selling the land to, that's saying, gee, we would like this because we want to do this with CAM. Will you lend your support? That if we knew that Trinity wanted to do it, it would be easier for us to lend, if you see what I'm saying. They're the ones we're contracting with here. So they would be the ones, I would think, that should come and ask us for that, if in fact it's appropriate to ask us for it at all.
So, we're also going to apply the Mass Cultural Facilities Fund for some, some of this funding for this feasibility study. Trinity's already written a letter of support for that. But at this point, they don't own that property, which is why I'm asking you for the letter of support for, for this one.
Mark, if at any point here you want to weigh in, but that makes me less comfortable. First off, Jean, I'm not saying any of this because I want to make things harder or block what you're doing or categorically saying no. It's that I want to be sure the town is involved in this in a way that's appropriate.
Yeah, sorry, Gus, I misspoke at what I'm, and it was confusing the two. The Metropolitan Area Planning Council actually requires a letter of support from town leadership. That is spelled out in the grant criteria. So if I, if you're not willing to sign that letter of support, I won't be able to apply for that grant.
Well, and I'm not saying that you can't apply. I, 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 hey, I didn't know what it was for, what it was trying to do. And now there's a question around whether what you're trying to do is feasible at all. That's, that's one issue. My issue has to do with how the town is involved in supporting something that you, who will either be a buyer or perhaps more likely a, a, someone who leases land from Trinity, and we're lending support for something that you're trying to do, when in fact our transaction is with Trinity and your transaction was with Trinity. I'm saying, all I'm saying there is, it feels to me like somewhere in there, it should be Trinity asking us for that letter of support, or perhaps Trinity and you asking us for that letter of support, because Trinity is our, the, the partner that we're entering into this transaction with. And you're the one that's downstream from that, entering into a transaction with Trinity.
Well, I guess what I would say, Gus, is that this is at a very preliminary stage. And, and all Jean is looking to do at this point is to get some planning money.
Oh, I understand what she's doing. That's not the issue.
But I think you're, you're down the road a piece towards the, whether we're implementing this or not.
No, I'm, I'm talking about the town opining on something that is, an activity between Trinity and CAM. What, if, tell me I'm crazy, because it's not the real-
No, at, at the very least, at some point, it's going to have to be subject to the land use regulatory boards of the town, planning boards, site plan, at the lease site plan review, perhaps something else. My sense is, it's probably, or could be an exempt use under Chapter 48, Section 3, so that it's something that's an S, that the town only has limited ability to regulate anyway, as opposed to prohibit. But I don't know that for a fact at this point. But to commit to a governmental agency, which MAPC is, on behalf of the town, seems to me to be premature at the very least.
That's my concern.
We're not committing to the use, we're committing to the study.
You're, you're basically telling, from what Jean said, you're telling MAPC that the town supports the proposal. That's what I heard her say, that she needs.
The words, the study.
Not in their plan, not in-
And if so, maybe she just needs to do some more homework, soliciting the appropriate town, either more information to the Board of Selectmen for a start, and then maybe the planning board involved in whatever, and then maybe, I don't know what time you're up against, but.
Well, I think that you missed what Jean just said, which was that-
It's due on Friday?
Jean is looking for us to support the study, not the use. Isn't that right, Jean?
Correct.
Yeah, so we're, at this point.
And my, but my issue is, that study is for a facility that has nothing to do with the town at this point. It's like, it would be like if the Kingsbury Club wanted to do a study and said, can you send this, can you endorse our recommendation for a grant? Because we'd like to study doing something out the back of our building. And whatever it might turn into, it has not been passed by the town, it has not been approved. Right now, I have a question about zoning, and perhaps I'm totally all wet, but we'll sort that out tomorrow night. And the town will have already taken a position in support of something through the support of this, which makes it harder.
We're, we're not supporting the ultimate use, we're supporting the study.
Can I ask a quick question?
I'm saying, why do we need, why does that need to be the case?
Is it possible to have a joint letter, Jean, with Trinity? Because they technically do own the land. So I, I get where you're coming from, Gus. It's like, it's like, if I want to do something on my property, but I ask you to approve something, it's like, it's not your property to begin with, but I should be going to the authority, which would be, so-
It's not Trinity's property either, though. They don't own it.
That's, that's the catch 22, right? Because when it's all said and done, it's either going to be Trinity's property or nobody's property.
Trinity, Trinity has already written a letter.
The town's property by default.
I'm just saying in joint, so that, so it shows in support that we're not overstepping our boundaries for land that we technically won't own when this facility comes to fruition.
That, that's not necessarily true. If the Trinity deal fell through, by default, it remains the town's property.
But then would this, would this facility have, so Jean, let's just go down the path of, if, if you paid attention to the beginning of this meeting and all the craziness with MBTA communities, right? So if that, if the worst-case scenario came true, and they didn't get the funding and they couldn't go forward, how would it then impact you with that, with this building?
We might go back to the earlier studies and want to revisit some of the existing buildings instead.
Well, they have to come back to the town, as they did with the chapel and the infirmary, and negotiate an agreement with respect to the additional land or facility to develop this.
Right.
That is a catch 22.
Yeah. So my, my, my issue is, I'm uncomfortable endorsing a request with a party that's one party removed from who we're actually dealing with in our transaction. Not really, I'm not trying to stop you from doing what you're trying to do, but I'm also not comfortable at this stage having the town take an action on, it's requested by you, on a, on a, on a relationship and on a transaction that we have nothing to do with at the point that you're going to do it. That's, it's just, I'm not a lawyer, but that feels like a very uncomfortable spot for us to be putting the town in. I guess that's all, I mean, I, if I, if I get a clear assurance from legal counsel that I'm, I'm jumping in a shadow that this is merely a pro forma thing that the MAPC needs in order to give the, the grant, and I understand it's just a grant, it's just a study, but it's for something that's between two parties that is not us. That's the part that I'm uncomfortable with.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
The reason they need to ask is because the town's the property owner currently? Is that why?
Yes.
But that, but, but if that's the case, us supporting CAM, doing a study for how that property will be used is wrong. If Trinity came to us and said, we would like to do this with CAM, and we would like to see this study happen as a joint request, then I would be far more inclined, because all we're trying to do is help Trinity do what Trinity wants to do.
You basically have no objection if Trinity said that.
I don't have to, no. That would make it much different for me, because all we're trying, then all we're trying to do is make it easier for Trinity to move ahead with their plan when this thing comes to fruition. We're just helping to grease skids with the party that we are going to have the transaction with. I don't have a problem with that. I just am uncomfortable.
So is there a workaround to that?
I think, well, I, I would think the workaround would be a request coming from Trinity or an endorsement letter.
Trinity's already endorsed it, Jean said.
I'll be happy to see that letter, so I can read it to see what they said.
So I would move that we vote- So I would move that we vote to have the chair sign the letter of support if we see a letter of support from Trinity.
And to be clear, I will not sign that letter of support. The two of you, you need to also substitute someone to sign that letter of support, if the two of you are in favor of it.
No, I don't, I don't second the idea. I understand your concern, Gus, and I think it's a matter of if Trinity can just get something in writing that says, we're 100%, and I'm not, I'm not saying I don't trust you, Jean, but I understand you're signing something that if Trinity says, no problem, we're in, we're in support of this, this benefits us and our community of 334 apartments and rentals, you got it? You have that in your hand, and I know, because your name's going on the paper, not mine, so I get that.
So, and Trinity's got to be willing to go forward with the change in their design plans, and they should state that in that letter. The letter, you ought to state that if.
Yeah, we would probably also have to say that our approval or endorsing, or our signing of this letter of support in no way undermines or limits the town's subsequent ability to exercise its proper authority in reviewing any project that might ultimately come out from it.
So I just want to clarify, didn't you indicate the deadline is this Friday to submit to MAPC?
Ugh, bummer.
So this, I don't see how you can get it done in that timeframe, in all due respect.
Ask for an extension.
That may be the case, unless you can ask for an extension, Jean.
There won't be an extension.
We, this is not the way, for something that's like this, we need more ti, you know, we've had occasion when things have come in and they, this is tonight or never, and it's like, well, when it's straightforward, we don't mind, but when it's not, this is what comes out. So, do they do, what's, is this once a year, once a quarter? What's the timing?
Well, they said this is the, this is the time when they have the most funding, so this is the most advantageous time to apply. Doesn't mean you can't apply later in the year, but chances are less favorable.
When did, when did this first come up? Like, when did you find out this was even money?
I just found out about it a week ago.
Yeah, if I'm not mistaken, this may be the same program that the technical assistance grant for the buses is under, and when we talk to MAPC, I don't know if you can hear me.
Here, here.
Yeah. So, as I said, we actually had a lengthy conference with MAPC on this, with four different departments, and they made clear, you know, the deadline is actually Monday, the 16th, but Friday is the day to submit it. My understanding is that it's a, it's a rolling submission, so you could submit later, but, you know, it sort of, when the money goes, the money goes. So that's why they suggested to put it in this Friday.
Okay, well, I mean, Jean, I'd be happy to have it show back up on our next agenda. If we can get this other stuff sorted out, so we can, we can get it done within two weeks is the time that you're looking for it, but.
Did you have a letter from Trinity tomorrow? Or some confirmation from Trinity tomorrow?
We'd have to then, then we'd have to reschedule a meeting to go ahead and approve it. I don't like the feel of this thing, I guess is the bottom line. It's like, I would like to be sure we do this right, we won't know, I want to hear on the zoning side, because this whole, this opens up a whole can of worms for me. I thought I knew what this project was, but if Trinity can put up a new building there, then Trinity could put up a new building anywhere else that it wants, and I didn't think that was the provision of this project. So I'm, I'm actually, I'm confused around the zoning right now, for, maybe that's just my dumbness, but.
The assistance there would be, the zoning is the enabling piece of it, and then you've got your specific land disposition agreement, which goes into the specifics of what the town, as the owner of the property, will permit them to do and not do.
You got the signed requirements, you got?
Yeah, but, well, I just need to sort, I get the two, and I know I had a very firm picture when the Master Planning Committee was first ending, and then when we were doing the Development Committee with the zoning, that this was all intended to tightly lock down exactly what we would have. Now, it may be that it was a land disposition agreement that did that, in which case, if anything happened, then we'd have to modify the land disposition agreement to allow for that, and then after we've sold the property to Trinity, I guess if they wanted to build yet another building, they would have to go through yet another modification of the land disposition agreement.
No, no, the point would be if, it would be a matter of interpretation of that agreement. If the agreement was comprehensive and basically said, you're restricted to this and nothing else, and that goes on record in the form of some kind of a restriction, at the registry, yes, but anything short of that, and it would be subject to an interpretation on a case-by-case basis.
All right, well, I hope by tomorrow night, with the Development Committee, I have a better understanding of something I clearly don't understand as well as I thought I did half an hour ago.
Well, you see, you're confused, part of the confusion is you've got an RFP response from Trinity that did not include any new construction.
Correct, right.
All right, so I mean, that was, in many ways, that was very attractive. In fact, you kept the arboretum area primarily because they weren't using it for any new construction, and they were only using it for seven apartments and everything else, and it was a better advantage for the town to retain that. My review of the land disposition agreement and everything, I don't see where it's, it specifically incorporates the master plan or everything that's in the master plan, which basically didn't.
Well, the proposal takes, the proposal says, here's what we took from your master plan, here's what we propose to do to support it. So I agree, it's the proposal that defines what this is all about.
I think you're faced with is, you need to look and see whether that's an as of right or what are as of right requirements in there. There are many as of right requirements in that Article 20.
There's a bunch of attachments to the LDA that spells out the project.
We're not going to solve this tonight.
No, no, I'm just saying.
So I, I'm going to have to get a little better input from the Development Committee tomorrow night to understand, and I don't think a letter tomorrow is going to solve this thing, so I think I'd be happy to bring this up at our next meeting, but.
Excuse me?
There's too many questions.
If anything, I think the, the letter has to address very specific things, perhaps based on the information you obtained tomorrow night, and then the letter has to respond to that. It's no good to have a letter that turns out not to specifically address the issues.
How will we know what those specific things are, Mark?
Well, it's the fact that, that, it would, the letter, in my general opinion, from looking here, would be spell out what the proposed project is, and that we, Trinity, are okay with this and support it.
Does it require?
The proposed project, but CAM proposes to do X, Y, and Z at this location, we've reviewed it, and we are fully supportive of it.
Do we need any acknowledgement that this, that our letter of support in no way can be interpreted as to preclude or otherwise limit the town's?
Well, that's separate, that's whatever MAPC is requiring in their, in their letter. That's a separate letter.
That's, so let me ask the question a different way. Is there any need in the letter that the, that the selectmen, if the selectmen submit a letter of support for this project to MAPC, is there any need for us to make a clear disclaimer that our support for this study in no way can be interpreted as a pre-support for, that would undercut the town's legitimate?
I think fully, the town fully reserves its permitting rights.
Thank you.
I think, I think that's prudent.
So he went to law school.
Can I, can I ask a question too? Who's going to build it, Jean?
We are.
So, on a piece of Trinity property, you will be going out for bids for a construction company to build it at some point?
On the ground lease?
On your ground lease, yeah.
No, another ground lease.
Another, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah. It probably could be more complicated, but I'm not sure, right? How, but, well, I try, Jean.
All right. Okay, Jean, I'm sorry, it's not tonight.
Ten.
All right. All right. Board and Committee Appointments, first one we have is vote to accept the resignation of Nassar Ismail from the Capital Budget Committee.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Carries. Next item, vote to accept the resignation of Alex Stevens from the Medfield Energy Committee and reappoint as an associate member of the MECC?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Next item, vote to appoint Chris Gordon to the Medfield Energy Committee.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Those are done. Okay, vote to authorize the chair to sign the engagement letter with Stone Consulting, Inc., for a January 1st, 2023 OPEB valuation, an FY23 GAZBIE 7475 report in the amount of $10,250, a roll forward of liabilities, an FY24 GAZBIE 7475 report in the amount of $4,950, and a funding study with two to three alternative funding schedules in the amount of $2,500. Those two to three funding, alternative funding schedules have to do with the town closing the gap on its unfunded OPEB liability, so that's for anyone who, if it wasn't the funding, the contract, OPEB, of a motion.
So moved. Always in favor of roll forward of liabilities.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Next, vote to approve the following expenditures from the American Rescue Plan Act expenditures, FY2024 capital plan in the amount of $350,000, FY2025 capital plan in the amount of $350,000. Just as an aside, Christine, those are both capital plans. As I recall, the ARPA money needs to be spent within two years, so we're putting $350,000 into the capital plan, but then when we allocate money out of the capital, we're taking that $350,000 and putting it in to the actual capital budget for FY24 and FY25, so we're full, we're not putting in the reserve.
No, no.
We're actually putting it into the budget.
Putting it into the capital budget for available funds.
Okay. Third item, town clerk voting booths in the amount of $10,000. Fourth, Board of Health AED project in the amount of $25,000. Medfield Outreach Fuel Assistance in the amount of $200,000. The Board of Selectment Economic Vitality Fund funded for three years in the amount of $45,000. The Interface Mental Health Services funded for two years in the amount of $30,000. The Regional Housing Services Consultant that will be working with us on the affordable housing management of the projects that are out there in the amount of $20,000, and Zoom Licensing in the amount of $25,000. Have any discussion?
Nope.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Next, vote to approve the application for a common vidler license, an application for an entertainment license for Chipotle Mexican Grill of Colorado LLC at TBD Main Street. So this is the Chipotle that's going in at the front corner of the Shaw's parking lot.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Do you have to set hours on the common vics?
I don't have an address.
Well, it was.
Less hours.
Will they get special, special permit from the CBA for that?
Correct.
So it should be consistent with that.
Yeah, yeah, we usually, we follow it.
So do we, are we have to revote this, or are we okay?
No, no.
We're okay. Okay. Next, before we, the next one is a vote to close the 2023 Annual Town Meeting Warrant. So we, in today's discussion, we've added a warrant article, Christine, and I think we may need to add one more placeholder article for a citizen petition, that's the.
I have that on there. Yep, we, the citizen petition came in today.
No, another citizen. I had, I had action to do a follow-up with someone regarding information to be disclosed. I did not yet talk to him, so I would suggest we put the placeholder in there because of the question that was asked. We had, we had a, we had a citizen who came in with a question looking for certain information to be presented or included in the town warrant. Don't actually think it's appropriate, but the question that came in was, well, and tell us, tell me what I need to do if it needs to be an article on the town warrant. So I put the placeholder there until I've had the chance to close the loop, and then we can always drop it, but that way, I don't want to say, oh, sorry, I didn't talk to you before we closed the warrant, so.
Got it.
Can't do it. With apologies, but I was, I was talking to somebody for a long time.
The other thing would be to just keep it open till the next meeting.
That's fine, too.
You want to do it that way? So we'll just defer.
Better, because it has to come in with signatures and all.
Yeah, okay, let's do that. We'll defer to the next meeting, that's even better. You can keep that one penciled in at this point, just don't forget about it, but, okay.
That would also allow us to address the citizen's petition that came in today, we've got some issues with.
Okay, okay.
For that?
Yep, that's it. Next item, request for approval for use of the Medfield State Hospital for the Medfield Car Show in June of 2023. Christine, any comments, or everybody knows what it is?
No, nobody has any issue with it on our side. I envision this was probably the last year that we'll be able to do this, so. He's looking for approval so that he can start advertising right away, so if you're okay with it, we'll get that moving forward.
Great.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Is there a specific date?
No.
Not yet.
No, it's, it's in June, yeah. Okay, but we'll do the license agreement, but he just wanted approval, initial approval, so he could start advertising, and then I'll, I'll present the license.
Start talking to vendors and everybody.
Yeah.
All right, next is, this is next, right?
Yeah, I have to run.
Consent agenda. Oh, there is no citizen comment, right?
Nope, there is a citizen comment from Bill Masaro this evening.
Oh, really?
And he is here, he's here in person tonight to present it.
Okay.
Yep, it was a trial to get here, but I'm here.
It's your first meeting.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Of the new year.
Bill Masaro, 36 Evergreen Way. All right, so my citizen's comment is on an information item that's coming up. It's, the item is the Notice of the AOL Former Medfield State Hospital, CND area, and I just wanted to repeat a comment that I made at the end of the last selectmen's meeting on the 20th. So I'm just going to read this. "The replacement AOL that DCAM recorded on 12/2 and publicly noticed on 12/15 generally addresses the Town PIP stakeholder issues and concerns with the September 2020 AOL. However, although it reconfirms the settlement agreement's delineation of the size of the AOL area, it does not address Town, PIP, and stakeholder 1017 suggested edits defining the scope and responsibility for the required monitoring and maintenance in the CND area. To my knowledge, there has been no DCAM response to the Town PIP 1118 letter requesting confirmation of DCAM's verbal commitment to begin discussions in January to create a new standalone monitoring and maintenance plan, and no meeting has yet been scheduled."
What's an AOL, just for the record?
Activity and Use Limitation.
Best in comments.
No, I, having met with you earlier, well, in 2022, I'm very familiar with the area you're talking about and your concern about maintenance, so.
And I just want to make sure I understand what that statement was relative to what I read in the, in the information item. The information item seemed to me to be pretty clear about specifying that the owner, which means the state, has to, has to semi, on a semi-annual basis, check the integrity of the area itself, so the cap and everything, that needs to be checked. They shall make sure that it's maintained, which means they are required to replace it. You're talking about the monitor, the environmental monitoring.
No, I'm talking about the frequency and the responsibility of who is doing the work, when are they doing it, how often are they doing it?
So the AOL talks about the work needing to be done by a licensed?
No, it just basically says the work that needs to be done. It says you can't dig in the ground without having a licensed, you know, environmental expert there to witness it and everything else, but it does not say, for example, you'll cut the grass, you know, twice a year, you'll do this, you'll do that, you'll take, you'll clean out the, the rain gardens, so these are.
Does it talk about cleaning out the rain?
No, but these are details that were specified in something called the Long, Short and Long Term Monitoring and Maintenance Plan, that specified all of the responsibilities and the frequencies of what needed to be done. Now, the major, couple of the major items, like settlement monitoring, that's in there, but there are many more items that have caused us concern. For example, why do we care if, how often they mow the top of the cap? Well, they have to inspect the cap biannually. How can you inspect the cap if you can't see it for the vegetation that's growing there when it's three feet high or four feet high?
Mm-hmm.
Right? So these are issues that we've had in the past, they're longstanding issues that John has been complaining about for.
So, okay, so it is, it is really still the maintenance of cap. I wasn't, when you first said monitoring, I wasn't sure if it. I wasn't, when you first said monitoring, I wasn't sure if it was the monitoring of the migration.
No.
Okay.
No.
Here's my question then. So first off, is that kind of detailed plan something that should have gone and been filed with the AOL?
Well, we, so here's, so when the AOL was audited after my complaint over the first AOL that got submitted back in 20, uh, end of 2019, early 2020, um, was because some of the items in the long-term, the, the monitoring and maintenance plan, the long-term monitoring and maintenance plan was, was originally referenced along with the settlement agreement in, uh, what was filed at the, the registry for the settlement agreement and the land disposition agreement, what have you, for the. Now, what's happened is after my protest, uh, DEP audit went down, did a, a survey of the area and everything else, and came back, and they said, one of the things we noticed was that this long-term monitoring and maintenance plan that was part of the notice of intent that was approved by CONCOM, approved by DEP, calls for items in the short term that have been completed. So you shouldn't reference that same monitoring plan and its schedule for what needs to be done long-term in the new AOL. You should, you have a choice. They told DCAM, DCAM had a choice. DCAM could either put in a new long-term monitoring plan or create a separate one. Now, we pushed for creation, for adding it back into the activity and use limitation. Uh, we submitted our comments, uh, our version of what we thought it should be, I want to say in October of, uh, 2022, uh, then never got, never got addressed. Now, there were some changes of personnel, not blaming DCAM for totally ignoring us, but there were changes of personnel and everything else, and it dropped down. We tried to revive it. Uh, we had several meetings discussing it. On 11/17, we had a, we sent a letter to, uh, to DCAM saying, you verbally agreed that you were going to have discussions with us to finalize this in January. Please confirm this. We haven't had a response to that letter, so.
Confirm.
So that's why it's not in the one now. Combination of events.
So our, right now, this shows up as an informational item, but actually, there's an action that, is the action.
Well, we're pursuing the action. I just don't want you to think, if you read it, if you just read it, you would believe that everything was hunky-dory and there were no, there were no additional issues.
Kind of what I read. I looked at the sub areas and figured out what those were doing. Uh, so our immediate action right now then is, because we're still in January, we're still looking for DCAM to close and coordinate.
Yes.
A conversation.
Yes.
And that's, is that?
They did try to set up a meeting, uh, with me recently, and I have not been able to.
Okay, so, okay.
So it's, so it's.
But I just wanted to know what the action's coming out of.
Yeah, I just want you to know that it's working and that everything hasn't been settled. Trinity needs to know that, too, because they have a concern. I mean, they're going to have 800 people, assuming everything goes forward.
Right.
I'm going to make that assumption, but we'll.
And so am I. Yep. Okay. Good. All right. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you all.
This is, I think, when was the last time Bill, Bill can come anytime he wants, but.
You have to see him go down behind the scenes.
Okay. Next item, we got consent agenda, and incidentally, thank, I'm not even sure why you all are here unless it's the entertainment value of being here, but thank you so much for being out to the bitter end of this Board of Selectment meeting. First one of the year. It's nice to have people not walk out on you in the, in the entirety at least, so just acknowledge for those who can't see, there is a, there is a group of people who are sticking it out, and I really appreciate that. Consent agenda. Uh, request for approval to hold the eighth annual Hunter's Run 5K on April 2nd, 2023, raising friends for, raising funds, funds, for Boston Children's Hospital, and the second request is a request for approval, maybe they need friends. I don't know, but.
I like it better with friends. Maybe friends for, maybe friends of Boston Children's Hospital.
Uh, well, it says raising is the.
Yeah, but funds might have been left out, it might be, or whatever.
It's my typo, I don't.
It's all right. It's a, it's a consent agenda, it's, and it's tenable. Uh, request for approval to hold the annual Souls of Medfield 10K Road Race on April 22nd, uh, 2023, raising money for safer streets for runners, walkers, bikers, et al, around town.
Like that.
Good. Have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Meeting minutes of September 27th, 2022, October 11th, 2022, October 25th, 2022.
I would move to approve all those minutes.
Yep, I've got them all into.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Those are approved. Next is town administrator updates.
I just have, uh, two brief updates. Uh, one, Happy New Year to everybody. Um, and the second one is I want to apologize, um, to everybody regarding our email situation since about December 20th. Um, we have been sending emails out and were under the impression they were being received by those who we were sending them to, and it was brought to our attention that they are going to spam. Our medfield.net account has been blocked from multiple servers. We're trying to figure out why. Um, we thought it's been fixed several times since December 20th, um, and I was told this afternoon that it was fixed again, so fingers crossed. I've sent a few test messages tonight while we've been here, so please let me know if you get them. Um, so just apologize if anybody is expecting an email from anybody at the Town of Medfield, please check your spam folder. Uh, we are responding to you, it's just getting diverted from your inbox.
But if I have a, a medfield.net, I, I'm getting from you, it's just if I'm, I'm outside that circle?
Well, we thought that was the case, but it's not true, because we're having an issue with some of our internals.
I've got all yours, I've got all Brittany's, that's.
Yeah. Okay. You're lucky.
I'm interested.
Or not lucky, I don't know.
There's no accident.
One of your emails, which was inconsciously, it was just a quick, thanks, glad to hear
about the grant thing, back at my spam folder. Looks like, who knows?
Better than a junk folder.
Yes.
Take it, take it.
Uh, okay. Next meeting dates are, next one is January 24th, and then, uh, February 7th and February 21st, so we're, we're sticking with the two meetings a month.
We'll go back to that for now.
Pace so far, for the time being. Uh, Selectmen Reports.
Righty. So, um, I, I had a chance to talk to you today, Christine, about a resident that reached out to me about the concern for the crosswalk light at the end of Robert Spruill, as you're bringing, cutting across to, um, kind of the Wilkins Glen Access, that, uh, and he actually sent me a video that shows it does not light up, so it's a little scary that he's disconcerned because you have a lot of kids cutting across there. So I'm not sure if that falls under, um, Mo's group, if they can go take a look at that and give us some feedback and let us know what's going on, because it should light up, and it, and I, again, I'll say, when I am out walking my dog, that is definitely a corner where, um, those cars are humming along, unless it's backed up, because the town is backed up in the center, it's a little scary, so if they could check that out, that'd be great. Um, I did have a chance to attend Roberta's retirement party, um, what a turnout, and it was so emotional, like when she came around the corner and saw all of her grandkids and all of her kids attended, it was, it was awesome. So it was a nice sign off for her. Um, she's the last person in the world that wants a spotlight on her, but to even have her son get up and, you know, and, and, and let her know what they, how much they appreciated, um, how much the, the town is, uh, appreciated her, and they got to see it firsthand, was, was very moving. Um, and then leaving Kingsbury the other day, I happened to bump into Bob Barelli, so I had a chance to get a quick tour of the first structure that was there, and I, I just, it's a, it's a nice setup, um, something he's done that you guys may not have picked up on. When you drive by that structure and you see the, um, looks like there's a second tear in the, the way the windows are done, that's all fake, but he did it so it doesn't just look industrial. So he told me he did like this double panel, so when you drive by, it looks like you're looking in someone's attic, and the lights are out, um, instead of just leaving open windows and you're just seeing, you know, uh, rafters in there, so just, just a nice setup, so, you know, I, I love poking my head in and seeing the progress that's being made, so, uh, that was nice, and, and then I'm bummed I didn't get a chance to do the Aura Tour. I know you guys did that. I was en route from Vegas, so, um, I did not get a chance to do that, but I wish I had. Um, and other than that, yeah, Happy New Year, I'm glad everybody's back and, back at it in 2023.
So Gus and I did go on the Aura Tour. It's, it's quite spectacular, actually. It looks very nice, I'd say. Um, the ceilings on the first floor are 11 feet.
Wow.
They're exceedingly high. The whole build-out is very nicely done. The, uh, common area is pretty extensive, excuse me, Mike. Um, uh, let's see. Uh, I had a conversation with somebody from the, the May Institute that runs a lot of group homes, and, and so that, as a result of that conversation, I shared some information with Sarah Raposa. Sarah said, uh, that's the Affordable Housing Trust, they're meeting next week, you can come and talk to them. So I went to the Affordable Housing Trust Committee meeting last week, and, uh, once I got there, I discovered that I really should have just been talking to Duipan Thompson, because he's the one in charge of, of, of the group home efforts, but I did share what, what the May Institute had told me with them, um, and, uh, and I had another suggestion for Sarah as, as an approach to some of the, I was suggesting to her that since we're about eight units shy of our 10% affordable units, that it might make sense to reach out to some of these small apartment building owners in town to see if they would be interested in some financial incentive, like is happening next door with the McCready property here, where we're going to pick up eight units of SHIs, of affordable units, from the support that the town is paying to the McCready's. Um, but the Affordable Housing Trust does have monies that they could pay to another property owner to, to convert, and, and we could get to 10% that way, because we're about eight short. Um, Medfield Foundation met last night, uh, they're clicking along. They had a very good fundraising in December, so that's nice for the town, because that money just comes right back to the town. Uh, at lunch today, I, I ate lunch watching the MMA's First Amendment Audit. I had no idea what I was getting in for, but this is apparently when people show up at your town hall with their cameras, taking movies of you, so that they can catch you doing something obnoxious to them, which they will then put onto, onto social media.
Well documented.
Town of, of Amherst manager said they were getting 500 calls an hour from all over the world, and people objecting to how they had treated somebody. So it's, there were some very good ideas. When I get the link, I'll send it along to your Chris.
I actually was, was at the meeting today.
Oh, okay. Because they had some very specific suggestions. I don't know if you saw Frank, but it's, it's worth thinking about how to harden your town hall against crazies.
We do training at department heads meeting, at department head meetings for, uh, those audits.
It's, it's crazy that we have to plan for such things, um, but it's the reality. Had office hours, uh, on Friday, and, and had, I had a nice long talk with Hilly as well, Gus, uh, at my office hours.
His is an office hour.
Well, it was actually office two hours.
It was, it was probably easily as productive, without a doubt, than last time, I bet.
Yeah, well, we were, what, an hour and a half? Um, I had a.
The thing is that the COA has, you know, free donuts and free coffee, so.
Yeah, we were just other.
So I, so here's the full story. I, I had my office hours on Fridays because they had, uh, the Tai Chi then, and I liked Tai Chi, and so I thought, well, I'll do the office hours from 9:00 to 10:00, then I'll do the Tai Chi, and they also have Blue Moon Leftovers on Friday. The Blue Moon, they, they changed to Wednesday, so I'm, I'm very disappointed about that. I also decided that I really shouldn't be taking an hour out of my workday to do Tai Chi, so I don't get Blue Moon or Tai Chi, but I'm still doing it on Fridays.
Marquee, what, that's Fridays, Pete? What time Friday? The Tai Chi?
It's kind of.
I, I think I'm just going to go by to watch.
Um, I'm trained in Tai Chi.
Tai Chi black belt?
So I had, I had some, uh, emails back and forth with Richard DeSorger today. There was an email that came from the Registry of Deeds about the, uh, they're, they're focusing on, on historic buildings, and the first one was on Norwood, and they did the town hall with the Crillion, the, the Bell Tower. I always thought it was a church, but apparently it's their, their town hall looks like a cathedral. Um, and I, so I sent an email to Richard, and I said, this is, you know, this is what the Registry of Deeds is doing, it's going to get around to Medfield eventually, and you'll probably be asked to do something, and he said we could do something about, he could do something about the, the town hall. And then he reminded me that he had just written the article about the, the fire in the town hall, and apparently, he said it's the 100th anniversary of the fire, one of them, because there were two. Um, and he asked me if we were going to do something about that. And I had no idea that we were going to celebrate the fire in the town hall.
On your action.
I suggested to him, when I was a kid in, in London, I, I went to a Guy Fawkes Day bonfire, because they, they have bonfires in England to celebrate this guy that tried to burn the parliament down, which is a very odd way to celebrate.
Blow it up.
And so the other thing that I raised with Richard was the 275th anniversary of the town is coming up in, uh, 2027, so that we might want to start planning for that. And that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Uh, like, like, uh, you, I was at Aura, and Christine, that, it really is. The desire, it's, it's a pleasure to see somebody who puts together a development, and then without just simple hard-nose, what's the most I can cram in here to get the maximum revenues? This is very well done. The facility is great. They have two gas grills and a smoker outside on a patio with two gas fireplaces.
Pizza oven.
Pizza oven, uh.
Long wash station.
Yeah, and the.
Room for washing your dog.
We saw two of the, you know, two of the apartments, super nice apartments, uh, and there are still some units that are left, not a lot, I guess, but there's still some, uh, the square footage, the, the, the one-bedroom was what, 1,500 square feet?
Three feet.
That was a one-bedroom. And then they have, I don't know how many, but they had some that were up to 3,000 square feet.